It's for our eyes and time. It's almost there.
Good morning and welcome to the Sarasota County School Board Workshop, June 18th, 2024. Today, we will be covering policy updates, student progression plan, comprehensive reading plan, which gets me very excited, and a budget update. So Superintendent Connor, would you like to introduce staff for policy updates, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So yes, we're going to begin with policy updates with our supervisor of government affairs and our legal counsel, Chris Parento and Patrick Duggan. We have two policies related to athletics, one of them being very popular in the news right now, which is the name, image, and likeness policy that we believe we're being very proactive and hasn't actually been approved by the state board quite as yet, but we want to be right in line with that. So I'm going to allow Chris Parento to take it from here and talk about our exertional heat illness policy as well as the name, image, likeness policy that is proposed for board approval.
Thank you Superintendent Connor. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. As the superintendent mentioned, recently, the FHSAA had revised some bylaws moving into the upcoming school year, and a lot of these are very important to the district and to our student athletes. So we wanted to be proactive on these. These are expected to go to the State Board of Education for final approval in July, and this will allow us to be in line with that and bring these policies back to you all as a board to approve in early August so that we can have these in place for the start of the school year. The first policy is Policy 4.19 exertional heat illness. We added some new language to this policy at the beginning on the purpose of the policy and details of it in accordance with the new recommendations from the FHSAA Sports Medicine Advisory Committee. We revised some definitions in line with new guidance from that committee and put some new information about heat acclimatization periods based on those recommendations. And that'll change some of the workup that athletic teams can do at the beginning of their seasons because we know in Florida, the heat can always become an issue at practices and training. So we wanted to be in line with the best practices. And we also added details on where emergency action plans should be kept. Those now have to be onsite at the school, at every school, and shared with the principal, the athletic director, and the coaches. So adding that information to our policy so that we are in line with those best practices. The second policy is a new policy, name, image, and likeness. As we all know, NIL has been talked about a lot in the news recently as the state has spent months going over a way to frame this issue for student athletes, and Florida is now the 36th state to adopt an NIL policy. And our new policy is a framework on what student athletes can and can't do related to compensation for NIL based on those bylaws from the FHSAA. And in those bylaws, it says that school and district logos, uniforms, mascots, insignias, and markings cannot be used in any NIL activity, and that athletes may not promote any third-party entity or service during a school or district-sponsored event or activity. And no school or district employee or representative of a school's athletic interests may engage in NIL activity for or with a student athlete. A student athlete who transfers from one school to another in season must meet one of the FHSAA's provisions to be allowed to secure an NIL agreement, and this was done by the FHSAA to try to avoid recruiting of athletes from one school to another. We also listed in here the violations of the state's policy, and those are set by the FHSAA, not by us as a district. With that, if anybody has any questions, we are happy to answer.
Mr. Inos.
Well, unfortunately, you know, as being a coach for about 20 years at baseball, I can tell you at the high school level that unfortunately that I know we have to have the policy, but I think that FHSAA really did a disservice to our student athletes in reference to this, just because I think it opens up so many opportunities for so many more investigations with so much more of a heavy load and a district has to do the lift. Because even in this, as it gives an example, as a commercial, as I've looked into it. So if I have a apartment complex that lives in such and such district and in such and such schools' boundaries, and they want to be able to provide me a place to live during that time period, as it states in the NIL, then now I could track with them to be able to live there as the services to promote ABC, then all it does is it really does open up recruitment from the bigger schools that have access to more money. And I think that that really takes away from amateur athletics in my point, but it's something that we have to have because I, again, I'm just voicing my displeasure with FHSAA because I think that something like this, you know, when they get to college, you know, they're making millions of dollars off their contracts for NIL. In high school, I still think that, you know, there's something to say about school spirit, about being an alumnus, about all of that. And I just think that with this, it just opens it up a can of worms, and it's nothing that we can fight against. But what it'll do is the rich will get richer. I hate to say it like that, but as you success breed success, and it just is that now you can say, okay, I'm supporting this complex, and I live within the district, and the school district will unfortunately will potentially have to abide by that because now they live with the district of the school. I just think that it's a great policy. Unfortunately, it's, I think it opens our students up for, you know, for some issues that I wish they didn't have to be exposed to. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Anyone else? I don't see any other intent to...
Just in terms of timeline, we know that the State Board of Education, I believe at their July 24th board meeting, have this on their agenda to approve. So this will put us in terms of notice, and by the time we're ready to approve this, we should be doing that in the proper order, having the state board approve, and then our school board will approve.
Well done.
Thank you.
Working ahead. Very impressive.
Thank you. Our next group is going to be student progression plan. So we'll have our chief academic officer, Rachel O'Day, and team present on our updates for the 24-25 school year. Want to thank the team for their hard work in getting to this point, and we'll present those changes to you as a board and answer any questions you may have.
Did you color coordinate? I have to ask.
Yes.
Wow.
And I followed their directions and said, yes, we were aware.
The message is loud and clear.
Well, good morning, everyone. Pleasure being here with you this morning. We have two topics we're going to share with you today, updates to our student progression plan, and then also some information regarding our comprehensive evidence-based reading plan. I'm thrilled to be sharing the seat right now with these amazing women and the amazing work that they have done, not only on updating these plans, but the work that they've done this school year, having such an impact. And I think you'll hear some of that shining through as we're sharing updates. I've also asked them to please share their story, not just updates, because I know you want to hear more in context of what not only is going to happen, but what also has happened to create such an impact this year. So thankful to have these ladies next to me. Let you introduce yourself before we move on.
Great. So I'm Michelle Anderson. I'm the Director of Curriculum and Instruction for high schools.
Good morning. Sue Meckler, Middle School Curriculum and Instruction.
Good morning. Amy Beechey, Elementary Curriculum and Instruction.
Heather Washington, Executive Director of ESE.
All right. So starting with our progression plan, I do need, go ahead, Sue. Thank you. Our agenda today, obviously, this is not a new document to many of you. You have been presented to on student progression plans in the past. So we're just going to focus on our updates, and those updates are either updates because we've had different ideas about better ways to outline our progression guidelines, policies, and procedures, or there has been changes based on state law and legislation that you'll find updated in here. So we'll start generally with just some general updates, and then we'll move into the different divisions and levels to get more in depth with the updates aligned to their grade band or their division. So as stated, the People Progression Plan sets guidelines, or excuse me, outlines guidelines for how our students reticulate through our system, K through 12. It's also aligned to state policy and district policy, as well as has to be updated annually and brought to you for approval prior to submitting to the state. So when we look at the K-12 updates, not many. Some of it was just for clarity of language. So throughout the plan, we did find that in some instances, we referenced parent or guardian, but not both together. And we want to just be consistent with our referencing of stakeholders. So we just paired those two together and made sure that throughout the plan, we were referencing parents and guardians at the same time for consistency. The next part, we did add back writing. That was removed last school year because writing was removed as far as an assessed area. It was assessed 2014 to 2022, then we removed it. Then in '23, we did field test it. This year, we did assess, and it's considered our baseline, and we are waiting for guidance from the state as far as how that will be incorporated into our assessment outcomes as far as a school grade formula, and then what thresholds are determining success for our students. But it is back in the plan so that when we go into next year and we actually have outcomes, we'll be able to align that to our progression guidelines. And the last one is talking about protected classes. So throughout the progression plan, you would find that in some instances, we would try to list out all protected classes as outlined by the state and the federal government. And sometimes we were consistent, sometimes we were not. So to avoid any inconsistencies and to align to our new district policies, we're using the language that you see in orange, which states that all Sarasota School District classes shall be available to all students without regard to any protected classification defined by state or federal laws. Because as that continues to update and change, that will cover us to make sure that no one is left out of the protected classes statutes that we are seeing through the state and federal government. So that is consistent with district policy language as well. And now I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Amy Beechey, our Elementary Curriculum Director for elementary updates.
Okay. The changes reflected within the elementary portion of the student progression plan were developed to align current practice to State Statute 1008.25. This statute outlines the policies and procedures for each district's responsibility to ensure the successful progression of students from one grade to another. The successful progression is based on proficiency in reading, writing, mathematics, and other core areas. Within the reading component, the statute outlines practices must be aligned to support the science of reading. Additionally, the statute mandates coordinated screening and progress monitoring for students from kindergarten through grade 12 to identify and address learning deficiencies. When a deficiency is noted through progress monitoring or screening, the statute outlines required response, which includes interventions, supplemental instructions, and remedial programs. The statute emphasizes the importance of early identification of academic issues and the continuous support to ensure all students meet educational standards. And now we're going to highlight a few of the changes to the elementary components of the student progression plan. On page 19 of the plan, you will see the monitoring of the intervention for both reading and math will be completed a minimum of three times per year. This change aligns with the state progress monitoring assessment, which highly impacts the identification of both substantial reading deficiency and substantial math deficiency. On page 25, you'll note that the identification of substantial reading deficiency now extends to our pre-kindergarten students. This also impacts good cause exemption, which has been extended to include any pre-kindergarten retention as a possible element for good cause. As a reminder, good cause exemption allows certain third-grade students to be promoted to fourth grade despite not meeting the standard reading proficiency level on the state assessment. In this example, previous retention is one possible reason for good cause. Students who have received intensive remediation in the area of reading for two or more years, but still demonstrated efficiency in reading, and were previously retained in kindergarten, first, second, or third grade, would be eligible for good cause. With this addition, this extends to any student who was previously retained in pre-kindergarten. On page 26, you will see the removal of the observation of reading from our progress monitoring, which aligns with the expectations requiring our progress monitoring to align with the science of reading. For the past several years, we have shared the supports put in place to address and supports of students identified with a substantial reading deficiency. On page 28, you will find the addition of the identification of a mathematics deficiency and the required student supports and parental notification. Similar to substantial reading deficiency, the math deficiency identifies our most at-risk students and requires the development of an intervention plan, enhanced progress monitoring, and an at-home support plan. The support defined by both substantial reading and substantial math deficiency are provided to any student meeting the state criteria, including a general education student, a student with a current individualized education plan, or an English language learner. These requirements provide our most intensive level of intervention and progress monitoring to develop a pathway to proficiency. I'll now turn it over to Mrs. Meckler to share the middle school updates.
All right. Good morning again. In middle school, we really have only one significant change this year, but it is an important one, and that is that we adjusted our scale score numbers in our math acceleration chart. That was very intentional because we no longer give the third eye-ready diagnostic. We removed that because we don't want to overtest when we're not really using that assessment to inform instruction. And that assessment was coming so late in the year that it didn't provide that opportunity for that additional instructional support. So we went back to two diagnostics. That math acceleration chart is not just about eye-ready diagnostic. We use several data points, including grades, teacher recommendation, past history in their scoring, and again, just that student's ability to be a superior mathematician. This is about opportunity in middle school because that opportunity can lead to possibly earning a high school credit in both algebra and geometry.
All right. Good morning. So for high school, where we kind of take all of the work done from K through 8, and when they come into ninth grade, we do the best that, you know, we can to get them to that graduation point, which is where the two big changes to the student progression plan for high school lives, and the addition of the classic learning test, which is another opportunity for students to earn a concordant score to meet their ELA or Algebra I graduation requirement assessments. We already use the PSAT for math, the SAT, and the ACT for math, and then we also use the SAT and the ACT for English Language Arts. So with the addition of the CLT, we've been able to add more students to our graduation roles, and I had our Research and Assessment Office pull some data. So as of May 11th, right before the whole big testing season started towards graduation, through the CLT test alone with this being added, 242 students made their math concordant score, and 125 made their reading concordant score by accessing the classic learning test as an option for them to meet that requirement. So that is in line with the Florida Administrative Code that was updated due to revised state standards that were approved as of July of 2023. Additionally, another option that has been added to help our students meet their graduation requirements at the high school level is now career and technical education classes count as a performing or fine arts credit. All career and technical education classes, not just the few that used to be like digital design or culinary arts. Now, any CTE class meets the requirement for that performing fine art. So our students who follow that career technical education pathway are not only getting the skills to be professionals in work, but also getting those graduation requirements simultaneously. And so those are the two big changes that we have at the high school level, in addition to all the other requirements that are included in the student progression plan to get kids to graduation.
And before you move on from that, I do want to give you a kudos, Dr. Green and Denise Cantalupo, in assessment. They were very aggressive in responding to this change with the class assessment. Not every district pivoted and took advantage, but this team in high school believes every single opportunity should be afforded to our kids, and they made the very quick change. And our principals got all over that as well, and they have been very competitive and aggressive with making sure that everyone had an opportunity to take this assessment and earn that concordant score. So that was a huge celebration for the whole high school team. So thank you.
And to add on to that, not only did we test the seniors, but they tested lower-level grades because they can bank these scores for future use. And because, you know, as we know, this was the first year we were able to use this assessment for concordant scores. And knowing what their cut thresholds are now, we wanted to get as many students that opportunity in this past school year and this upcoming school year so that they can be prepared to graduate. Use your mic on. Click the little speaking man button. It'll turn on.
All right. This is my first time using the mic. That's all right. Okay. So you're going to see that there are quite a few changes, but they're not big changes in terms of some of it was just editing and clarifying language. We're in the process of updating our ESE policies and procedures for the state. So we want to make sure that we're in alignment across the board. We also have our ESE webpage where we have a very clear, comprehensive manual that we work on to help with our policies and procedures. So we want to make sure that everything is in alignment. So you'll see that there are three slides with some things that we've added, but it's really to help with clarity, ease of flow, and make sure that everything is flowing. So if we look at the first one, when I looked at the student enrollment, this was just updating the language to have clarity for certificate of completion. We wanted to make sure that our links worked when we go back to what the FDOE has. And so those were just the minor changes that we added to that. When we look at something that we're really excited about is through part of our ESE review and all of our work that we've done this year, we have an agreed-upon shared mission and vision that we wanted to incorporate into this as well. So that was added as well as putting clarity into what it means to have a student placed in ESE and what those services are. So really providing that to families who are going to look at that and have more understanding of what that means. For the extended school year, this was just moving it from a different area. It's really important that as we go through a document, that there's ease of flow and understanding as we're going through that. So for us, it made more sense to put it in a different location to where that was. When we look at communication to parents and legal guardians and report cards, our students are general education students first. So it's not something that is a separate entity. Just because they're a student with disability, we fall under all of those same parameters. So keeping it all in one place was something that was really important to us as well. So that was just kind of taking that out of that and just aligning it to everyone as a whole. English Language Learners was embedded in the middle of our section. So we wanted to bring that to the forefront, just so that, again, looking at flow and having that as an area, there is a small component where it does speak to students with disabilities. But again, just trying to have a really comprehensive flow as you read the document. Gifted, that's always a section that we have to review continuously. Like I said, we are in our ESE PMP, and we work very collaboratively to ensure that our processes and procedures are updated to benefit all students and make sure that we're providing every opportunity to our students. So as we're going through this, we are aligning it to what we have submitting to the state for our ESE PMP and aligning it to our website. We are continuously updating our website. So if there are any changes, we've really had it to where it's going to link it back to our ESE PMP and our website so that it will be one continuous message and not different messages that may be held. When we look at the Florida Access Points, Alternate Academic Achievement Standards, this was updating language just because it changed the name back to Florida Alternate Assessment. Instead of, last year, it was Florida Standards Alternative Assessment. So just kind of keeping up with the lingo and making sure that we have that all correct and just updating the language as it relates to that. When, let's see, promotion and retention for the exceptional students for standard diploma, this was just minor edits, again, to provide clarity, to add the language that would, it was specific to the grade level and the course, and just adding very minor specific edits to that, just again, for clarity. Participation of Students with Disabilities in Assessment Programs, there was a change in the section title. We updated that. The section title was Participation of Students with Disabilities in Student Assessment Program. So that was the new title that we updated it. And again, we added it to include the waiver assessments, looking at the medical exemption pieces, the extraordinary circumstances. All of those were updated. That would be in line with our legislative and our statutes. And then children with medical complexity, this was now added to our waiver process. So that was a paragraph that explains that as part of that, and it was added to a consideration. And then graduation options for students with standard diploma, this did have a title change for that, and we updated it to go with the language. And looking at the graduation and the DOE website, there were charts that were in there. We took those out and linked it right back to DOE. Again, sometimes there's things where they're constantly changing, and we want to make sure that those updates are in there, as this is our one chance this year, to make sure that we have that continuity. Deferring the receipt of the diploma, this is, again, this was updated in terms of what is with our best practice for the new language for that.
So as you can see, that does conclude our section on updates for the student progression plan. I know that you've had this and you've read it. We gave you the red line. We also gave you the final draft because that does change the page numbers. Just the red line makes it a little longer. Well, actually, there are blue lines in this document, but you do have both. We know that you've spent time reading, and we're hoping that this presentation did answer most of your questions. But if it did not, you know, now would be the time to ask those questions.
Seeing Ms. Marinelli. Sorry, you.
Well, then, okay. Turns on and off. Okay. Going back, like, to the elementary, when you're talking about monitoring the interventions, could you, for the public, explain that process? And if it goes before the MTSS, parental involvement, the notifications, and how that whole monitoring piece, some referral to the monitoring?
Sure. In this section that I described today, it referred to both substantial reading deficiency and substantial math deficiency. And this is our most intensive level of support. Most likely, students were already involved in some level of intervention before this identification occurred. But this elevates both the progress monitoring and the communication that occurs for a student that has been identified at this high level of risk. So within this, there's an initial parent notification that goes home that outlines fully for the parent the identified area of the deficiency, how that deficiency will be addressed with the intervention, and what resources will be used, who's providing that intervention material and support. And then along with that, there's a monthly progress monitoring report that goes home to parents that lets them know, how is our student responding to instruction? Are they making gains towards the grade level proficiency? Or do we see a need to revise the current intervention plan and go back and find a better support system to move that child forward? In addition to that, the parent notification includes an at-home plan that provides strategies for the parent to do at home related to that same specific goal. So we are providing a unified force moving forward from the school to the family setting. And also, the parent is informed of New World's Reading Initiative and scholarship opportunities to help address that also outside of the school day. In addition to the parent supports that are provided, it does notify the parent that if these deficiencies are not remediated by third grade for reading, that there is that possibility of retention. So from my perspective, the substantial reading deficiency was really defined to inform all stakeholders of this child, that this child's at risk, and we have a duty and a responsibility to address that deficiency as quickly and as efficiently as possible. responsibility to address that deficiency as quickly and as efficiently as possible.
Well, thank you. And then where on the district website, if anybody wants to go and look at all this, because that's a lot of information, where would they go on our website?
So it was housed in the Teaching and Learning Department, but in the search function, you can just type in student progression plan, and it'll take you right there.
But this current updated one won't be there till after it's approved by the board on July 16th.
Correct.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Edwards.
So I have a couple of just comments and then observations. Where you removed the protective classes and changed that language, it makes a lot of sense, and so many things are in play, but I would make a reference, if possible, to our policy regarding Title IX so that people could immediately move over to those protected classes if they needed to reference it. That's just my suggestion. On a good cause student
Yes.
who moves to the fourth grade, are we still monitoring that student? Is there still tracking? Because that wasn't obvious to me.
Yes, that is a requirement of state statute. A child who moves forward under good cause exemption is required to have an intervention plan in place, along with that monitoring, to ensure that the student is being successful within that promotion and has the supports in place to meet ultimately a grade level proficiency.
Like it. Here was a gray area for me as well, where you added the language pre-K. Is that going to be consistent across the board? Because I know lots of times we still refer to K-12. Is it pre-K-12? And is that consistent? And then footnote, reading deficiency in pre-K. From my perspective, is, that's the point, one of the points of pre-K is not to have reading deficiency. So can there, can there be some, I don't know, a report or some update that the board gets if there are reading deficiencies in pre-K so that we just understand the impact? Is it working? Is it not working? Is there some barometer that we could see?
Sure. The end-of-year assessment for our pre-K students provides a readiness scale for the students, are they ready to go to kindergarten? And a level of that would indicate, a below level number of that would indicate that substantial reading deficiency. So we do have those parameters in place through the state statute that that substantial reading deficiency is from pre-K through grade three now. So we could provide that information for you about how many of our students are falling into that category at year-end.
I think that's great to get that, just that feedback, because the whole point now is that especially as we start having to make tough budget decisions, if we're thinking pre-K is working, that's a data point that will make sense in terms of investing into more pre-K. So I think that's an important conversation for us to have on an ongoing basis.
I do want to add one thing to the reading deficiency and the progress monitoring, just for our families. There are times in which kids are going to come in and out of that, right? There are times when we have really strong foundational skills aligned to a certain skill, whether it's vocabulary or decoding or encoding, but there are times when we don't. And when we demonstrate the need that we don't, we're providing those tier-two and tier-three interventions to anyone. Anyone that's demonstrating a skill deficit is going to be grouped and progress monitored until that deficit is corrected and they're back on track where that is not impeding their ability to read anymore. So we may have students that are never identified as students with disabilities that are always in tier-two, tier-three, K through 12, because that approach is what is creating success and proficiency for them and accelerating the progress. So if a parent does get that letter, it doesn't mean that we need to move into identifying your child with learning disability, it just needs, they need intensive progress monitoring and skill intervention, and that that is going to breed success for their children. So that statute is meant to cover everyone, to make sure everyone has access to high-quality literacy education with progress monitoring interventions, no matter what designation you may have or not.
That's good information, too. I'm glad you added that. That's important. Thank you.
You're welcome.
In the high school area where we were, you were talking about how students were moving into graduation through the opportunities, through the new assessment. I might be a little premature, but is there a way that we can get a merger of graduation and the fact that that student is graduating with a plan? I might be premature. Say a little more about that. So in other words, I think the point of what we were talking with our college career centers and every student graduating with a plan, the idea behind that, from my perspective, is that it should enhance graduation rates because we're working with students not only to develop that plan, from my perspective, I always called it enrolled, enlisted, or employed, that that is merged into those graduation rates. Did they graduate? Check. And did they have a plan? Check.
So I think you'll be excited about our July workshop, because we're going to bring in Tripp and Ron and Amy to talk about our CCLR initiative that will talk about the actual plan through school links and how that is progressing, and I think that will address it. So to somewhat answer your question, yes.
I am premature.
Yeah. And we will, we will go in depth with that at our next workshop.
Great.
Mr. Edwards, we do have one thing that we do in-house called Project 10, where we do have a spreadsheet of every child enrolled in the high school and who is on track and who is not. For example, Mr. Connor was interviewing one of our potential principal candidates this morning, and he asked her, what was she focusing on this year in her role? And she said Project 10, and she says, I need three more kids. I'm going to get these three more kids. And that was the lead at the high school level at Riverview, knowing who is on track, who is not, and what more did they need. There's a very comprehensive tracking system for all the opportunities to get those scores, so I'm not going to steal your thunder, I want you to share that.
So Project 10 monitors everything that's required of the students to graduate from the credits they've earned, their GPA, their assessments that they've taken, and if they've taken any concordance scores to meet the assessment requirements that the state has in place. And so this is a regular, ongoing, monthly, if not bimonthly, meeting of high school teams that include not only administrators, but counselors and at-risk coordinators. And Dr. Green, they come and they review the students to see where they are to make sure they're on track for graduation. And so the CLT was added in as one of those other options to allow that kind of track and plan. And as Mr. Connor spoke, the school links and the CCLR piece that has been embedded in the last couple of years is going to be aligned with that, and I'm not going to steal their thunder either, because they've done a really great job of putting that together, and we've worked in partnership. So with the ultimate goal of getting to 100% graduation rate, that's what we're working towards. And so through the Project 10, that's one of the biggest levers we have to hit those students who weren't on track when they started, or maybe not on track by 10th grade but given to the finish line for graduation.
Thank you. And I'm just going to drag that over to ESE. That's an area that while I'm in community and I'm talking for, looking for academy opportunities and all those types of things, I think it's easier for us to forget that are some of our ESE students also should be graduating with a plan. And so I just, where possible, have that definition of what a plan could look like for some of our ESE students so that as we begin to look at employment opportunities that we can offer our students, I just want to make sure that it's included in the conversation. Again, I might be premature, so I apologize.
So, and I love those thoughts, because students with disabilities is definitely an area, especially when we look at Project 10, because it's something that goes across all of our districts. We do work extremely collaboratively. What I also, just kind of, just for the public, and I think for the board's understanding too, is when we look at our students with disabilities with IEPs, we are required to start that transition planning process, and it actually now starts in elementary school. So there's a lot of components where we do have job coaches in our schools. We've been working really diligently to really expand upon what those roles and responsibilities are, and I'm really excited, as we continue to move forward, we are working with, we're in the process of getting the pre-eds grant, which is working with vocational rehab. So that's something where we do encourage all of our students to look at that as an opportunity to support them through one of our agencies, because as they move into adulthood, that is something that can help them be successful, and there's a lot of other attributes that can help them in what they need. And so there's some very close alignment, and they come to a lot of the IEP meetings, and so really making sure that when we're doing these IEPs, it's on what the student's skills and interests are, and that we align to what we're doing in the high schools and looking at all of our opportunities in the community. And so if we have sites that they're going out and getting work experience in, it's not just a job to meet the need, but it's a job that's related to what their skills are, and then we work on coaching and supporting them so that the goal is that they would kind of move into either a profession or a career track that would support that. So it's an extremely exciting opportunity that I think we're just getting going. The momentum is fantastic, so I just kind of want you to know, there's more to come.
Yep. That'll be one of our ESE update workshops, and it's going to be great. It is a post-secondary plan, and one of the highlights of that is the student we hired out of Riverview. He was part of a post-secondary plan, so we do have a lot more to share with that, so.
Great. That's great. Thank you so much for that, and I leave that.
The transition plans, I know that for a few years, we were just having staff, for example, from the elementary meet with the middle and the middle of the high. Are we able to take that back, or have we, to including parents and actually making it a meeting where everybody is collaborating? Where do we stand? You've referenced transitions.
For our ESE students particularly.
Particularly, yes.
We did make adjustments to that based on the program review, so Ms. Westerman?
So within the transition planning process, we want to make sure that all of our collaborative partners who are working with students who know those students well are actually communicating with each other. So this year, we actually worked with our administrators and to find out, hey, what is it that you think would work best? Here's what we've done in the past. Here are some options moving forward. And instead of having, say, this is the day that you're going to come and you're going to do this, it was, we understand, especially in that time of year, it's an extremely busy time, and so trying to find a time when schools with all of the players, the counselors, the liaisons, the teacher, whoever needs to be involved, because every case is different, to make sure that we had both of those articulations with true conversations, that it wasn't just a passing of a paper or a, hey, let's do this really quickly. It was really, what do these students need? What do I know that has been extremely successful in my school that you can now carry on? Because the whole point of what we do is a continuum of services, and we want to make sure that we don't lose that in a transition from grade level to grade level or even school to school. So when we talk about including the parents in those processes, if there are parents that are needing that additional layer of support, schools are reaching out and they're inviting those parents in to say, come in, and we're going to go ahead and have some of those conversations that we need to have. So there are students that we have said prior to the start of the school year, they're going to have some additional meetings to incorporate that piece. So we work with families on what their needs are.
It would be ideal for that to be a public process so that parents that weren't tapped might have that opportunity to participate. I know that it's, there is a financial piece to doing things over the summer before school's out or after school hours or during with substitutes, and I understand all of that, just interested in where we're moving. And I know that the board, we all, I can speak for all of us, I'm sure, love these workshops and giving you our input, and each of us do, and that's part of our role. I just want to make sure that everything that we are encouraging or adding or speaking about with passion, that it does go through the superintendent, that we aren't any one of us directing you to go forth without our CEO at the handle, so.
And I think that's great feedback, because we did make adjustments to the logistics internally. How are we interacting school-to-school administrator, administrator, and school-based stakeholders? And then it does become, yes, they're directed, communicate with families, reach out, but we could layer in a little bit more as far as the expectations regarding that, and then also letting families know that there is that opportunity.
Thank you.
Whether someone connects with you or not, it is your right, it is our responsibility. So we can definitely create assurances for that. I think that's great feedback.
Yes. And I just want to just reinforce that this is all feedback. I may be looking at you, but it's actually feedback for the superintendent. I want to make sure that as chair, I'm initiating appropriate protocols as passionate and invested as each one of us are. And I can't help it, Dr. Green, every time you bring up high school, she's back there bubbling and bopping up and down and getting all excited and very proud of her principals and her teachers, and you are exuding with joy for the work that's been done. I can't help it, I have to recognize that.
Yeah, and I will recognize that, too, Dr. Green's leadership. And I will say, every single high school principal who took real ownership of Project 10 this year, I think we're going to see the fruits of that work. And I want to thank Don Clayton and everyone who's involved. I know I'm missing people's names here, who's all involved in Project 10, but it is a meticulous student-by-student review on a monthly basis to make sure every one of those checkmarks are there, and if not, why? And what are we doing about it? And so it's an arduous process, but it is needed, and it helps to not have any student fall through the cracks. And I think we're going to see some great results from that this year, to be, more to come on that. But yes, and then in terms of the plan, can't wait to share that, once we got them to the finish line, how are we helping launch them into post-secondary? So we've got some good work going on there, too.
Anyone else?
Okay, now we are transitioning to our comprehensive evidence-based reading plan, and the picture that you see on the PowerPoint is not a stock photo. That is actually something from our Literacy for All Institute that our curriculum directors, program specialists led by our chief of elementary schools put together. And we, when we showed up at the Literacy for All Institute, we said, this is not an institute, it is a wedding. We are getting married to literacy because it was that nice and done so well. So we did memorialize a lot of this, and so that is a picture straight from the table settings from that institute and that chalkboard. Every leader and their team were asked to create a slogan or a hashtag or something that just kind of rounded their statement on reading and how important it was, and this one obviously says, "Reading opens the doors to the rest of the world." So every table had those quotes or those slogans that they came up with for the duration of the institute. But that was the week of June 3rd. We are, at the end of this section, going to be able to share with you a little bit about the Literacy for All Institute, what that looked like and sounded like. But before we do that, we're going to jump into the evidence-based reading plan. Last year was the first time that this was something that had to be approved by the board before it was approved by the state. So the team did a very in-depth job just explaining exactly what the plan is, all the nuts and bolts to it. So today is all about just highlighting any adjustments that we have made based on new initiatives and plans. Some of it is based on, you know, aligning to that strategic plan, and some of it is stuff that we did this year that we had to get in here and make sure that was a continuation of work. So our agenda is as follows, and you can see the middle section, we'll dive into elementary, middle, and high a little more deeply and hear from our experts to my left. But before we do that, just a reminder that the comprehensive evidence-based reading plan, the whole goal is to improve outcomes in reading. That is why it's there. It's really extracted out to make sure there's been a thoughtful collaborative process on that work. It does have to be brought to you annually. That is new as of last year. It is outlining professional development for all stakeholders in all areas, from leadership to instruction to progress monitoring, assessment, everything there is to create that comprehensive evidence-based literacy pathway for our students. And it is, again, very collaborative. As you can see, the red and black is all about the alignment and the loving and shoving we have to do to each other to get us on the same page and paddling in the same direction, because there's a lot of reading wars, we know that. And we had to fight our own war to get to a really good outcome, and that's okay, because these women are brilliant and have just really done amazing work, so you're going to get to hear about that. I know I keep saying that, but I'm excited, and that's why we have a red and black and pearls. Moving on, also the comprehensive evidence-based reading plan, also, we have to update based just on rules, right? The rule changes. And Ms. Beachy had alluded to the fact of the science of reading. That has been something that has been in play for about three years, but really making some strong statements about what is and what is not allowed. The three-Qing system and any practices aligned to not science of reading has been removed, so you'll note that, as well as adding those characteristics of dyslexia and the intensive monitoring that is expected for all students. What's really exciting about dyslexia, though, it can, you can still read at proficiency. It is a very achievable thing with aggressive progress monitoring intervention. Students with dyslexia will be proficient readers, so that's a very excited thing. If you haven't seen the research, I suggest do that and look into that as, it may be something that people consider a barrier. I just say that they learn different, and we are here to equip them with the successful skills to move forward. So we have that in there. And then other rules are around charter schools. So our charter schools can make a choice to either follow our comprehensive evidence-based reading plan or create their own. They do have to submit them to their board for approval, and they have to submit them to us to submit to the state for approval. And so we do have charter schools that have chosen to follow, and we have charter schools that have chosen to create their own, and you'll be able to see that towards the end of the presentation. So Ms. Anderson?
So as we get into the comprehensive evidence-based reading plan, one of the first places that we started was the reflection tool. So as we looked at last year's plan and level of implementation, we went through it, identified areas where we met our goals and areas where we saw room for improvement. And so in that, we looked at it through three lenses, whether it was through literacy, leadership, and professional learning. leadership and professional learning and looking at the role of our school-based administrators and their knowledge base and skill set and understanding the science of reading and what that looks like when they are working with their teaching staff on campus to support their students. So we recognized that we want to work on fully training all of our school-based administrators in the science of reading, so they know what the implementation should look like in the classrooms, so they can help guide their teachers and their students to more reading proficiency. We also took a standards curriculum and instruction lens, where we wanted to make sure our standards that are aligned to reading, writing and speaking are systematically integrated throughout the day in all subject areas and so that we can also enhance the delivery and monitoring of our tier-three interventions for our most struggling readers, so they have the tools and resources and instruction to meet their needs and get them to the proficiency levels we want them. And then we also looked at assessment and collecting the data to figure out where our students are, that ongoing progress monitoring piece will be necessary to operationalize our plan for collecting and reviewing our data so that we can evaluate the effectiveness of our tier-one instruction, our tier-two and tier-three interventions. And so by focusing on those three areas as a collective pre-K or K to 12 group, we want to make sure that our efforts and our energies and our resources are being deployed in the most efficient and effective way possible for all of our students. And so that's where we use as a framework at each grade band to guide what our updates and our moving forward work will look like.
And moving into those updates, again, the golden thread and hence our example of that, we are directly aligned to our strategic plan, Every Opportunity 2030, definitely very embedded in pillars one and two. And also the literacy for all, we've really lifted off that quite extensively and had that launched in the beginning of June, which was looking at that expansion of literacy coaches from K-5 to K-12. And then also expanding literacy interventionists out of first grade into all elementary schools and actually two of our middle schools to start, our Title I middle schools with goals to secure funding to enhance that even further. But what we, we created a cadre, we screened, we hired, and now we are knee-deep in the training. And that's what that literacy institute was. It launched what our principals' roles are, what our coaches' roles are, what our interventionist's roles are, who are the leads at the district, what are we going to be focusing on, how do we do this? We did all of that at that literacy institute so that we can ensure a very strong start to this initiative, which is embedded in our strategic plan for the '25-'26 school year. And we also, our new resources, our decision trees have been enhanced and modified, our teaching tools to engage our specialized instruction teachers, so those that teach specialized populations, E L and E S C, we have pathways and resources in there. Again, kind of modeling how the state has looked at reading. It's not just if you have a diagnosis or you happen to have a plan, but what do we do for all kids? And then specifically, when we have that plan, even targeting even further and making sure those teachers have access to tools just for them. And then that aggressive ongoing progress monitoring, which we did experience this year, and again, we embedded into the plan moving forward. So you have an attachment that came through email last week. That is a one-pager, just capturing in detail any adjustments that came into that comprehensive evidence-based plan. If you just wanted to look at that as our curriculum directors are sharing with you, that's just another point of reference for you if you're visual and like to read further, as I know you have, but just another reference again. And Ms. Beechey?
Okay. So the professional learning focus that you see on the screen outlines the components that we'll be focusing on overall from kindergarten through grade 12. You'll notice first, the 40-hour Science of Reading Professional Learning Pathway. This is a plan that we are looking to develop for our teachers to support two different components. Our teachers are required to have 40 hours of reading instruction in order to attain their certification or their recertification each year. And we also have the responsibility of each, five years, yes, sorry, not each year, so every five years. So with that, we also have a responsibility to train our teachers on the science of reading. So what we are looking at is a pathway that would allow our teachers to achieve both of those goals. So throughout next school year, there will be components that will be provided that will hit each of the components that you see highlighted on this screen for you, from the introduction of a science of reading to the areas of phonemic awareness and phonics to vocabulary development fluency, reading comprehension, the writing connection to reading, differentiated instruction and intervention and data-driven instruction as well.
And I'm going to add into that, Ms. Beechey, as well. We did highlight for this presentation, the yellow, the phonemic awareness and phonics, differentiated instruction and interventions and data-driven interventions. We did that very, very heavily and aggressively this year. So we're taking those patterns and rhythms that we experienced and we are embedding that in our plan moving forward. But that was one of the successes that came out of third grade, which Ms. Beechey will speak more to, but I did want to highlight that. That was a very strong approach that we took early on this year, knowing that data was going to be really important, knowing that we had to strengthen progress monitoring and knowing how to pair that instruction is what we focused heavily on with our teachers and our administrators, which are components of science of reading. We just didn't say, this is the science of reading. But now that comes next, and we did apply for a grant with the state to target that specifically. We're waiting to hear back, and once we hear back, which I do believe we'll receive that, we'll be able to put that together and offer that throughout the year in a manner that we feel is going to be most achievable for a variety of audiences, which is great, just to get everyone on the same page and understanding all of those components, no matter where you sit in the organization. So that is coming. And then I'm going to jump down to model classrooms, Amy. Where that is an initiative that, again, thinking of our literacy coach cadre and our interventionists, as we are using that force to develop teachers and also support students, teachers or anyone learning needs to see it. And we need to create those model classrooms, because we have plenty of them out there, where teachers can learn from one another, feel comfortable entering each other's classroom, giving each other feedback and growing and developing together. So that is something that we're going to put a stamp on in all of our schools. And that, just because you're at Fruitville and maybe not at Southside, you can go to Southside, right? And Southside can go to Fruitville, but we want to create all of these models across our district and replicate and grow from each other, because our teachers are the best asset and they're doing amazing things that we want to showcase, grow and learn from. So that's a really great initiative we'll be jumping into and then continuing to further the P L C work, because a collaborative environment culture is crucial for any continued advancement. So we'll continue to nurture that. And then, Amy, I'll jump back to you.
Okay. So as Ms. O'Dea mentioned, our literacy cadre is composed of two vital support teams, our literacy coaches and our literacy interventionist. Each group will have specialized professional learning to support the development of the skills necessary to achieve effective practice and assure fidelity to the Literacy for All Plan. Our professional learning for literacy coaches will be centered on Diane Sweeney's Student Center Coaching Model, which emphasizes a collaborative approach where coaches work directly with teachers to enhance instructional practice based on real-time student data. This model prioritizes measurable student outcomes and fosters a supportive, data-driven environment for continuous improvement. Concurrently, our literacy interventionists will engage in professional learning focused on the science of reading, which integrates research-based reading instruction practices. This training will equip our interventionist with a deep understanding of phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary and comprehension, ensuring they can implement evidence-based interventions to support diverse learners and address reading difficulties effectively. Together, these professional learning initiatives will create a cohesive framework for improving literacy practices through targeted, research-informed strategies.
So I want to interject there that these two are very critical positions and the board is very supportive in, as we've reimagined how we are doing our Literacy for All Initiative. And I want to be clear for our teachers who are listening, that our coaches are there as a support mechanism. They are not administrators, they are not quasi-administrators. They are there strictly to be that confidant, that support mechanism, to be vulnerable as they're learning new things and strategies and testing them out and modeling it and doing coaching cycles, as well as our interventionists. And so we will not, principals will not be using coaches as quasi-administrators. They will not be doing evaluations. They will provide feedback. I think that's part of the continuous advancement model, is to provide the ongoing feedback, but that's done in a very coaching style and not in an evaluative manner.
And Mr. Connor, it was important to him that our administrators were at our Literacy for All Institute to really understand their role, and that was very clear, that you are there to create a culture of coaching and to create a pathway for success for this interaction and this relationship to build. You are the evaluator, you are the administrator, they are the coach, very different. So that was great to differentiate that for the whole group over the two.
As well as the expectation that coaches are doing 80% coaching and 20%, because there are times when you do have to follow up on monitoring plans and logs and things of that nature that go with the, you know, the clerical aspect of the job. So 80% of the time, the coaches are in the classroom with the teachers, working with them, either with the teachers and eventually working with groups of students when needed. When we get to a point in the year where we shift our focus from coaching up teachers to now really drilling down with our students as we approach that state testing window, working in that way, so.
One of my favorite components, actually, from the Literacy Institute was when we had a chance to see Diane Sweeney's Student-Centered Model in Action, that coaching model in action. We saw two teachers on the screen working in pair in the classroom. And watching that visually, you could not distinguish who was the coach and who was the teacher from that. It was such a solid partnership that they were both teaching in the classroom. There wasn't somebody sitting back to the side, taking notes and doing an observation. They were in the classroom as partners, working through collaborative planning and really implementing that instruction, which allows for that side-by-side coaching to appear in the moment as they're seeing how the students are responding to the work. So I'm really excited about this model that we've brought to our literacy coaches this year and the changes that will bring to our practice. So in addition for our interventionists, I wanted to highlight a couple of the learning opportunities that they will embark on this year. It includes the Orton-Gillingham Approach and other strategies to support learners with characteristics of dyslexia and other reading difficulties. As you know, the Orton-Gillingham Approach is a structured, multisensory, phonics-based method used to teach reading and spelling. The Orton-Gillingham Approach is designed to help individuals, particularly those with dyslexia, by emphasizing the direct and explicit teaching of the connections between letters and sounds. This approach integrates visual, auditory and kinesthetic learning styles to reinforce memory and learning, making it highly effective for struggling readers. Orton-Gillingham is an individualized, systematic and cumulative, ensuring that students master each step before progressing to the next, thereby building a strong foundation of literacy skills. In addition to having some of our program specialists actually certified in Orton-Gillingham over the past year, we've had several of our program specialists also obtain dyslexia certification through university coursework. This dyslexia certification program was a comprehensive university program that allowed our program specialists to build the knowledge and skills necessary to support students with dyslexia. The program integrated the latest research on dyslexia and evidence-based instructional practices, including multisensory, structured literacy approaches. Participants engaged in very rigorous coursework and practical training. They learned to implement and actually go out to school sites and provide one-on-one tutoring with students to put their learning into action. And with this, we now have a powerhouse team of program specialists that are equipped not only to share this learning with our interventionists, but teachers throughout the district. So we're very excited about that. Then moving forward to the elementary updates, I wanted to highlight just a few of those that you see on the screen. First, State Statute 100.8.25 requires a coordinated screening and progress monitoring system to include a dyslexia screener. We will be utilizing AMIRA Learning for this purpose. Not only does AMIRA provide a diagnostic assessment that is efficient for dyslexia screening, it also has been accepted by the State Board of Education as an additional alternative assessment to demonstrate proficiency for good cause. The next several updates were added to infuse the science of reading into our tier-one instructional block while enhancing support for students with an exceptional student education and our English language learners. We are adding the University of Florida's Literacy Institute Foundations, also known as UFLI, to our K-2 classrooms as a primary source for foundational instruction. UFLI Foundations is an explicit systematic phonics program that introduces students to the foundational reading skills necessary for proficient readers to build accuracy and authenticity for letter-sound correspondence. UFLI was piloted in several of our classrooms across the district this past year, and the teacher response was extremely positive. They were enthusiastic about the ease of use of the program, as well as the multisensory approach that it provided for the students to interact with the content. So we're excited to embed that model within our tier-one block moving forward.
And may I say, from a financial aspect, it's much cheaper than a lot of what's out there, so that's great, too.
Yes. Win-win.
Yes, absolutely. As you see noted on the screen, the addition of responsive E L A frameworks for whole-group and small-group instruction are an important change to our plan this year. These frameworks were created based on one of our greatest successes we experienced this year, which has been referred to as the third-grade response plan. I'd like to take just a moment to explain how this third-grade response plan was brought to life across our district. The initial work was launched by our deputy superintendent, introducing our principals, assistant principals and our program specialist to a new framework to assess and analyze our data. The three layers of data introduced by our deputy superintendent provided a systematic approach to review data from a universal level, or Layer 1, to an instructional unit level, Layer 2, to the individualized student response data at Layer 3. Our level chiefs then extended this learning into their level-like time with principals to ensure proficiency within this new frameworks of utilizing and understanding the three layers of data. The learning provided by our chiefs was ongoing and intensive to ensure a shared understanding and build a shared commitment to this work. As our leaders were embedded in the learning of the three layers of data, my team was then asked to develop protocols to assist teachers in utilizing the data and putting this work into action. These protocols were designed to support the analysis and problem-solving associated with our universal assessment, also known as FAST. These protocols developed, allowed teachers to not only analyze current levels of performance, but also analyze predicted levels of performance as it related to FAST PM3 assessment. These predicted levels are what anchor the construction of our third-grade response plan. We were able to determine which students were predicted to perform below proficiency on PM3. The team then built a responsive plan, which redesigned the tier-one instructional block. Anytime a teacher noted 30% of the students in the classroom were predicted to perform below proficiency, the plan kicked into play. The plan modified the instructional minutes within the whole-group instruction. It also provided a responsive menu of small-group models that would meet the individualized student groups within each of our classrooms. Along with that, as our leaders began to become more proficient within this model, we also had to find a pathway to provide this learning to our teachers. And that's where our 15-hour professional learning plan came into play. In January, my program specialist began to meet with our third-grade teachers to train each and every third-grade teacher within the district on the response plan itself. With the support, the plan was initially met, I can say, with some hesitation by our teachers, but with the support of school leaders, program specialists, our literacy coaches were prominent in the success of this plan, along with other support staff on site, we were very successful. And with those frameworks in place, our teams now want more. So what we've done moving forward is develop frameworks from kindergarten through grade 5 that will allow our teachers to start beginning to make those responsive decisions following AP 1. So the guidance is there on how they will adjust their tier-one block, how they will adjust their small-group instruction, to be able to replicate that success we achieved.
And Ms. Beechey, let me jump in there real quick. I'm going to coin it Project 3.
Okay.
Okay? Because it's a very similar approach and we will see really great lag data for graduation. You got to see the impact of third grade this year, but Ms. Beechey, Ms. Minelli, their approach is very similar to Ms. Anderson and Dr. Green and how they are rigorously looking at data, advising, meeting, planning, intervening, implementing. It was a very aggressive approach, but with the instructional side of this, it was very impressive what Ms. Beechey and the program specialists were able to deliver in regards to, here are the kids, here's the group they're in, this is the skill and this is the instructional strategy and plan that I would use if I were you. And training and seeing that all the way through the end was very intentional and strategic, many sleepless nights, but it was very rewarding and worth it. So they did amazing work. I'm just very proud of them both and the administrators and teachers and program specialists. Excellent work.
Yes, and I just want to echo that. You know, I could not be more proud of what the team has accomplished this year, but ultimately, I'm so thankful that our teachers were willing to partner with us in this initiative and ultimately, they were able to elevate student achievement and performance and really accomplish the results that we saw.
So from the six, you know, as I mentioned, we have now K through 5 frameworks that will be available. And then in addition to those frameworks, we also have a team that's developed explicit guidance to add on to the frameworks to support students with an exceptional, or with an I E P, or students that have been identified as an English language learner. So additional instructional strategies and supports built into that guidance to enhance those frameworks even farther. And then the final component I wanted to share with you is to highlight just the redesign of our intervention model moving forward.
of our intervention model moving forward into the 24-25 school year. Previously, when I was here last year to talk to you about our SERP, we highlighted our K-2 and 3-5 decision trees. This year, those trees have been redesigned where each grade level now has their own individualized tree. So it provides another layer of specific guidance for each grade level to help support the teachers through the decision-making process and problem-solving process when a student is identified with a concern. How do we identify those root barriers? And what are the appropriate resources we should go to first to help support that child moving forward? So the decision trees were unveiled at our Literacy for All Institute, and they were met with great excitement. So looking forward to the work ahead. Okay. And all right, lastly, as you can see on this screen, the initiatives that we've just discussed will be supported with ongoing professional learning throughout the 24-25 school year. Two of the initiatives noted are both supported by the University of Florida. And recently, our governor signed House Bill 1360 into state statute, which partners with the UF Lasting Center with services to boost early learning and K-12 achievement statewide. And I'm happy to say that we have been in the forefront of this partnership and are excited to continue the work with the University of Florida. The University of Florida's Lasting Center for Learning and the UF Literacy Institute are both initiatives from UF focused on educational improvement. The Lasting Center is dedicated to transforming and teaching learning through innovative research-based programs and partnerships. It aims to improve educational outcomes across a wide range of subject and grade levels, providing professional development for educators. And the center also focuses on a broad spectrum of educational issues from early childhood through grade 12. While the UF Literacy Institute specifically focuses on advancing literacy instruction and research, its primary mission is to improve reading outcomes for students through the development of literacy programs, resource, and professional developments. UFLI emphasizes evidence-based practices in reading instruction, particularly those grounded in the science of reading. One of the partnerships I wanted to highlight for you is the Flamingo Small Group Model. This is out of the University of Florida's Lasting Center, and two years ago, we began a very powerful collaboration with the Community Foundation of Sarasota, who supports the Strauss Literacy Initiative. This initiative is anchored in building professional awareness about literacy challenges like dyslexia and providing funding to support instructional practices to support learners with characteristics of dyslexia or other reading challenges. Through this collaboration with the Community Foundation of Sarasota, our team received a grant to build awareness and provide teachers with tools necessary to serve a diverse student population. The University of Florida Lasting Center provides a professional development model called Flamingo Small Group Literacy. And within this model, it serves as a tool to help teachers develop an in-depth understanding of reading process and how a child learns to read. The model includes explicit systematic instruction in decoding, reading practices to build fluency, direct modeling and guided practices and strategies to promote student independence and the use of reading strategies, in particular, strong metacognition. We know individuals with dyslexia require explicit, direct, and systematic instruction in both oral and written language. However, research shows that all students benefit from this type of instruction. So after engaging in this Flamingo job-embedded professional development, our educators are now able to identify students who may need additional assessment for reading disabilities, use data to make instructional decision that addresses students' individual needs, provide evidence-based instruction, support learners in encoding and decoding words, support learners in connecting oral and written language, as well as supporting students in acquiring strategies to read text. In the spring, I had the privilege to attend the year-end celebration of our educators who completed this rigorous training. Families and students were also invited to this celebration, and I wish I was able to have captured some of that experience on video to share with you today. I heard from parents about the incredible growth their child was able to achieve under this model, and I heard from teachers that were so proud of the learning they completed. One teacher stated, "I have always worked hard as a teacher, but I have never seen the growth and confidence that the students have gained as readers that occurred under this framework." So in addition to the Flamingo Small Group Model, the grant also provided the certification I discussed earlier for Orton-Gillingham and dyslexia. And I'm honored to share with you that the team has just secured a multi-year grant extension with the Community Foundation of Sarasota to continue this work.
Excellent. So I think what you're hearing this morning is a lot about pride and passion, right? All of us are very passionate about this work. We have a lot of pride in what we've accomplished this year. I want to give a shout-out to Dr. Johnson. He has been an incredible leader, helping to guide me to grow more as a leader, but also to embrace my passion for literacy for all. It's been something I've been working on for a long time in this district. So when we talk about these middle school updates, I think it's important to really talk about some new enhancements we have to some instructional resources. Our goal is to accelerate the learning for our most striving readers at middle school. And I think our data this year is showing that we have made some tremendous gains in those lowest quartile students, but we need to dig deeper to each individual student and see where we potentially missed the mark or how we hit the mark for them. The three new resources we're bringing, one is called Phonics for Reading. And what I'm most excited about this is for the first time in all of my years in education, we are able to personalize for each and every student their specific skill deficit. We have addressed phonics in its entirety. Not every student needs all of the components of phonics. This program is going to be able to diversify for those small groups of students exactly what they need. In doing so, those students should start to see themselves as readers that can be successful. That self-efficacy will accelerate that learning for them. It also has a component based on decodable text that comes with it. So students will be reading, not just practicing those skills in isolation. We had over 80 teachers attend a training the last day of school. We don't have 80 intensive reading teachers. What we had there was ESE instructional facilitators, ESE teachers, ESOL liaisons, and ESOL teachers, learning alongside of our intensive reading teachers, so that everyone is part of literacy for all, and how we can support these students not only during intensive reading class, but throughout their day. The second intervention that we are providing as far as a new resource is called LIFT. It is specific for our ESOL students who language acquisition is impeding their ability to be successful with on-grade level content. So this LIFT is going to be used with specific courses so that they are having on-grade level standards in the English Language Arts, but through a language acquisition lens. And then lastly, I'm sure you're all familiar with Scarborough's Rope, which is part of the science of reading. But I also stumbled across some research on what is called the Writing Rope. And because writing is such an essential part that we are bringing back as a focus this year, the Writing Rope is teaching our teachers those essential strategies that they can use in writing across all content areas. We've learned that writing is thinking. You can't write unless you're thinking. And it's also about that reciprocity of writing and reading. So I'm very excited to bring that to the forefront as well, because I think that will not only enhance writing, but will also improve reading across the curriculum. With professional learning, our focus is still going to continue to be to improve Tier One instruction. The more we focus on good, high-quality Tier One instruction through the work we will do with PLCs, the less need we'll have for Tier Two and Tier Three intervention. You know, I always think about my favorite treat, and the favorite treat I have right now is that we have reinstated literacy coaches at the secondary level. I have a picture in my office of a team of secondary literacy coaches from nearly 20 years ago. We did incredible work then, and I know this group is going to do incredible work now. So thank you. The focus will lead to boots on the ground in our classrooms every single day. That's what we need. Our specialists do incredible work, but they can't be there every day at every school. So working alongside those literacy coaches is going to make a difference. As I said previously, these new resources will not only support our teachers, but ultimately our students' achievement. So thank you.
Thank you. Hello. As you'll probably hear, there's going to be a lot of focus on reading and writing from K through 12 at the high school level. We'll be continuing that piece. And as a part of our continuous advancement to improving student reading outcomes, at the high school level, those improved student reading outcomes lead to improved graduation outcomes, which is post-secondary planning outcomes, and then just future good citizenship and just a happier life outcome kind of a thing. It's what drove me into public education is to help kids get to the better outcomes. So one of the things that I am really super excited about, and one of the things that we're fundamentally changing at the high school level, is we've done a couple of things. One, at the start of this past school year, I took the ELA Intensive Reading Program Specialist position and split it into two different people. ELA, through the best standards and the writing standards, is a very intensive workload in supporting our English Language Arts teachers, nine through 12, across our district. And then intensive reading, in supporting those teachers and those students and the special things that we do for them, was also a very intensive workload. And having one person try to carry both of those loads, we weren't working efficiently and effectively across the board. So following the middle school model, because Sue, you know, has helped shepherd me through, this is my first year in this position, she's helped shepherd me through a lot of the learning curves I've had in this position. And when she said this is how she did it, I'm like, that's brilliant. So I'm like, I want to do that, too. And so we've done that. And so we've been able to bring in what I think are, I feel like I call my team the dream team. They're super amazing, motivated, dedicated, passionate educators. But through my ELA program specialist and my intensive reading program specialist, who work very much in partnership with each other, but with this intensive reading program specialist as a part of our updated process, she's been able to really spearhead working with and alongside the intensive reading teachers on our campuses and seeing an improvement in those bottom quartile learning gains across our ELA classrooms is going to be really exciting, I hope, when the data is finalized and comes out, because she really sat with them and walked them through all those steps. So now, this upcoming school year, in addition to my intensive reading program specialist, Deb Therian, we have now the literacy coaches, who are going to be on every campus, and they are going to be aligned with the work happening both in ELA classrooms and the intensive reading classrooms. So the updates that we're bringing on in terms of curriculum, where Deb, our program specialist, and our literacy coaches will be both heavily involved with, is the Read 180 program that we're implementing in our ninth through 10th grade courses. And that is a real improvement over other things that we've done in the past. So we've had resources that we've been using to provide diagnostics and to provide lexile measurements and to provide some opportunities, but there was nothing that was a core curriculum that helped the teachers guide their instruction, assess their students, progress monitor them, and then also become adaptive to individual student needs. So with this move to Read 180, we meet all those things. We have a core curriculum that the teachers can access and use and implement. We have ongoing progress monitoring. We have an adaptive nature to the online platform. And then we have resources and books that will spark student interest in reading on their own. And as someone who is a lifelong reader, I love reading things I'm interested in, which then turns into reading all kinds of things. We want to spur that love and passion in students. And that's what the Read 180 program is going to do for us at the ninth and 10th grade level, improving learning gains, improving proficiency rates, and getting all of our students where they need to be. Because at the high school level, as at other levels, reading is not just happening in one or two places. Reading doesn't just happen in English Language Arts or intensive reading. At the high school level, and as a former social studies teacher, you can't learn social studies if you can't read. It's just a fundamental. In science, same thing. Math has word problems. Every content area has a reading need and foundation. And so as we build on the work happening from K through eight, and they get into ninth and 10th grade, not only do we hope and expect for better performance in the reading outcome, but in all other outcomes across the board, because it really should be a cross-curricular initiative, and everything should tie into each other very much into symbiotic relationships and creating kind of a synergistic movement in education. So for ninth and 10th grade, we're using the Read 180 to focus on those FAST scores as the students have to take those in the 10th grade graduation requirement. We are also picking up Chalk Talk, which offers many of the same opportunities that Read 180 has, but those are for our 11th and 12th grade students who may not have reached proficiency on the 10th grade FAST assessment. And this will work with their concordant score opportunities. So students and teachers will be able to use this platform, which provides a core foundation of curriculum instruction, which provides adaptive assessment and progress monitoring, which is directly aligned to all of their concordant score options, the CLT, the SAT, the ACT, and also aligned to our FAST assessments. So 11th and 12th grade students kind of get, you know, multiple opportunities to meet that graduation requirement through retaking the state test, but also through taking these concordant scores and putting this resource in the hands of our amazing teachers to allow them to have a specific curriculum resource to help target what the students need to put better on, will allow them to meet those proficiencies. So even in the intensive reading options for 11th and 12th graders, our goal is to cut those classes. Like, I would like to not have those classes in the future by being able to get them through ninth and 10th grade, or at least get them through 11th grade. By senior year, they can expand more opportunities to do things like dual enrollment or to do things like on-the-job training and pursue those CTE options that won't be taken up by having to speak in an intervention class as they get towards graduation. And so with these things, we're also super excited. And through Read 180, we also have the code resources, which is going to be a new tool that we're going to put in the hands for our foundational ELL learners. And so at the high school level, we have intensive reading, but we also have English Language Development, and we have developmental language arts for our ESOL students. And so the code resources coming out of the Read 180 are going to meet the needs of those foundational language acquisition learners, and this will be another curriculum resource that'll have that delivery of instruction, that progress monitoring, that adaptive nature for our students, to really support them as they move through their years towards high school graduation and acquiring the language and reading skills necessary for them to be successful. And then my own personal work with the program specialists, and we're all reading and writing across the content areas, is using our program specialists with all of our content areas. They team up, they collaborate, and we're going to develop reading and writing professional learning opportunities across our content areas.
And adding on to that, the professional learning that you're hearing from the three curriculum directors is really pushing into their program specialists, not even touching what we deem the professional learning department. Okay? Because this is very specialized, aligned to resources, aligned to practices, and so they'll be taking hold of that. And then there's going to be other things that come out for the organization that come from our program specialists and professional learning. So just to highlight that. There's a lot of multiple hats going on in curriculum instruction. Okay. So, oh, go, sorry. No, 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 no.
So our professional learning categories are the same as you've seen before, because we wanted to create a comprehensive plan, and so we found our buckets, if you will. So our high-quality Tier One instruction, our ongoing progress monitoring, remediation, intervention, and foundational reading skills. So once again, professional learning communities and using those groups of teachers and professionals to access and analyze their progress monitoring data and using that to inform their instruction and to provide specific interventions and remediation in that peer-to-peer collaboration. Teachers teaching teachers is really the best thing, and so using that together is where we are, that literacy across the content areas, emphasizing reading and writing, especially as the writing assessment continues to roll out and with a focus on argumentative and expository writing, that's an excellent place for high school classes across content areas to develop. And then one of the best things, I think, that happened this year was the creation of the teacher toolkits. We were introduced and embraced our achievement level descriptors this year, both at the curriculum and instruction level and at the school administrator and the teacher level. So our program specialist brought groups of teachers in to collaborate in creating what we call our teacher toolkits, which align our instruction, our pacing guides to our achievement level descriptors and our best standards, so that everyone knows where the target is. It helps with that backwards design planning and using that rolling out for next school year. We're going to also adopt a similar format in the high school of our K-8 colleagues of doing continuous common assessment, as opposed to one or two times a year before the end test. So depending upon which content area it is, it's ranging from five to six tests before they take their final test to give them progress monitoring data. I talk with my hand, sorry. And then we are improving And then, we are improving our screeners for intensive reading. My Program Specialist for intensive reading is also now dyslexia-certified, so she can run those assessments for our high school students. So, we'll be using that moving forward. And I've already talked about Read 180 and Chalk Talk, I think, sufficiently. And then, the code and the Read 180 resources to get to those foundational reading skills, and moving our kids all towards graduation and success.
Yes. So, one of the little golden threads in middle and high is the intensive reading side, and really investing in what that looks like and sounds like for the students that are not reading at proficiency. And you'll notice that they're choosing Read 180, and what Sue is building off of is her Common Lit and what has been happening there going into year three, but then adding in a very prescriptive program with phonics for reading, which is just going to enhance a good foundation that we have there. So, although they're different, it's the same. It's just what resource is going to meet the needs of that age and the teachers that we're asking to implement? And so, we chose the path to meet the needs of both, but ultimately feeding the same outcome. As far as charter schools, as we stated, they can opt into our plan, which I think is a great one, highly recommended, and/or create their own. And so, on the next slide, it's showing you that we have those that opted into our plan and those that are creating their own plan. And you'll see a good amount are creating their own plan at this time. We did actually, Ms. Meckler put a huge stamp on this when she spoke to charter schools and said, "If you're implementing our plan, it's with integrity and totality." And so, those have committed to the integrity and totality of our plan, and then we have some that have developed a different plan, which they will be sharing with their governing boards, which they will submit to us, to submit to the state. But overall, our responsibility is to monitor the implementation of the plans, and so, we are actually scrimmaging that. What does that look like? What does that sound like, especially for those that are implementing our plan? And so, we can report back to you on that. We don't have how we want to approach that yet. There are some different things we have to consider with just what kind of oversight we can and cannot have, and what is going to be the most beneficial for the charter schools to have the kind of support that we can provide.
Yeah, and I think that brings a larger conversation for the board at some point to talk about if we're going to continue to move the needle, we have to remember that we have 14 charter schools, you know? And that's significant when you're talking about the size of Sarasota County. Some school districts maybe only have one. So, when we want to move the needle of our literacy outcomes or math, I think it's incumbent upon us as a school district to support those charter schools. No matter where you fall on, you know, pro-charter, not charter, I think it's incumbent upon us, if we want to move the needle and get us to where we want to be ultimately, that we may need to make some investment on our end with staff to help in monitoring and providing that support, whether that be literacy, math, what have you. So...
This is a community, and they are all our students
That's right.
That will grow up into the productive, successful adults that you've been referencing.
And we're excited about planning that engagement. We want to be there. We do. And we have a lot to offer, and we're looking forward to collaborating and building that bridge. And the reason why it's not fully baked is because we want to engage that stakeholder, so that it is a symbiotic relationship, and that they're getting what they need, so that students can perform. So, this last slide, we've said a lot about it, you know? So, I'm not going to speak to this. I'm just going to show you a video. I want you to see the video. Obviously, Craig's team does an amazing job every single time, taking what we're doing, capturing it, so we can share it with you and the public. So, we're excited to share our Literacy for All video.
We are here today for our two-day Literacy for All Summer Institute, where we are pulling K through 12 literacy coaches, literacy interventionists, our principals and assistant principals, and our ESC Program Specialists, for two days of professional learning and deep diving into our Literacy for All Support Plan.
So, Literacy for All is exactly what it sounds. It is literacy for all students.
So, the goal for our literacy coaches and our literacy interventionists, after leaving our two-day institute, is to set them up with a set of tools and strategies to be able to leave and support teachers and students in the classroom.
We're learning about the process of how coaches interact with staff, and why it's important that they build a relationship, and that the teachers understand why they're there, that they're there to support, to offer suggestions, and it's really a horizontal relationship between the coach and the teacher.
Our goal at the end of the day is to increase student achievement and to provide access to literacy for all of our students. However, that starts with our frontline, which is our staff. And as an administrator, I feel like it's really important to be here, learning the same content that they are, and knowing what is the expectation moving into next school year and moving forward as a district, so that when I'm providing support, I know the language that they are speaking, and I know the goals that they are trying to attain.
Our Literacy for All initiative is about creating a team of skilled, trained professionals in the classroom, outside the classroom, and at the leadership levels, to work together to support one another in this initiative, because it takes a village to achieve these goals and continue to move students to meet their fullest potential.
I really do love that this is an initiative that's going K through 12, because students need literacy, we need literacy, way beyond when we stop, you know, going to English class. And so, for me, being able to promote that love of literacy within our staff, within our students, to make everyone love reading and literature and vocabulary just a little bit more, might make an impact beyond anything I've ever seen.
So, that is the conclusion of our updates regarding student progression and our comprehensive reading assessment. Again, we know that you've spent extensive time looking, reading, marking, noting. Hopefully, our presentation answered most of your questions, but at this time, if you have any further questions, now's the time. Please. You're not on again.
Then it goes off. Okay. I was taking a lot of notes, and it's going to be hard to wrap all of this in, so just let me find, put all my notes. But I think the thing that impresses me the most, and I can relate with Mrs. Meckler, because we, our offices were across the hallway for many, many years, and we always had the best of intentions in working so hard. And this is the first time that it's like all together. And we're all working together, me as a board member, supporting what the superintendent says that he needs for you and for our schools, our teachers. I've never seen anything like this. And I think it, we've all been through many strategic plans. There's nothing like Mr. Connor and district staff and schools and our teachers. The teachers are the ones, because they see the goals, the mission, and they've bought into it. So, I think it's just kudos to all of you. And I'm really glad to hear about the model classrooms coming back. We used to have those. I'll just put a little plug for when Ms. Rose was a teacher at Southside. She had a model classroom that people for behavior came around and instruction from all the district, and we were tied in with USF at that time. So, she was the model that they sent everybody to at Southside. So, that's nice to hear. And I think having the coaches, because so many of our, we have wonderful teachers, and sometimes, especially beginning teachers, they need to feel safe when they need help. And as things change, even our veteran teachers need to have a safe place, so they can get help, without thinking that their evaluation is going to be impacted, or I'm going to be let go. We all need support at one point or another. So, I'm very happy. And I think the Orton Gillum, I mean, for our kids, but to see everybody all working together, I just can't, I, let me find my next notes. And I like where, in the middle school, personalizing each student's needs in reading, because you've all said, "If you can read, you can do anything. If you can't read, you're going to struggle your whole life." Because you, and I just think it's, it just ties everything together, pre-K to 12, but especially kindergarten through 12, and getting that early intervention and then continuing it. So, I just say kudos to everybody. I just, I'm, I'm just in awe that it's finally all come together. Would you agree, Ms. Meckler?
Oh, yeah.
That's what I thought. So, it's just so positive to hear and to get that all, but I just, kudos to our superintendent and everybody, and our fabulous teachers, who are the ones that are doing this. So, just a little bit on charter. I'm assuming that having the charters that the district has to follow, the CERT or whatever they do, that that's an unfunded mandate, too, pretty much? And so, I guess it's going to be the accountability piece, and that's another thing on the school district. Even though they're all our kids, it's just another thing. That's 14 more schools that you have to add on. So, I think that's part of our legis, when we look legislatively, we need to push, because I will have a real hard time that we would have to use a district staff to have to follow that and implement. So, I think that's something that, if my fellow board members, when we get to that point, we need to hammer that home, because they all ours, and they need to be accountable, too. So, other than that, thank you all very, very much.
Whoever'd like to go next?
I'd love to. I took down a lot of notes, too. I had to actually go back and summarize, but I'm so excited. Sue, you kind of made, I think you broke the emotional element, because it is amazing. So, I'll try not to crack. But I'm very proud of what's happening. I think there's such a fundamental shift, and I think you said it very well, and you said it very well. There's a lot of pride, and there's a lot of passion. And over the last 10 years, I certainly always saw that passion, but there was sometimes that disconnect and that frustration. And so, people who get into this, who go to teaching, do it because they love the children, and they want to see them thrive, and then yet, to not see some, that connectivity happen, it's got to be very frustrating. And to be able to see just the execution with gusto is just, it is amazing. I am grateful. I'm grateful for all of you and for all the staff that leaned into it, because I know the feedback had been like, "Whoa, there's a lot of change," but, and we love it, but not so fast. But, you know, I think there's the passion of, the students don't get this time back, and we've really just got to accelerate it. And I think at the end of the year, as you mentioned, I think you said that people are like, the staff, they want more. You know, so sometimes, change can be an adjustment, but the benefits are, we're starting to see it, and I think we are, I mean, we only have just scratched the surface. So, I am thrilled beyond words, but I can share that feeling, where, because I think that over many, many workshops, there have been a lot of informational pieces that are great, and that'll come to the end of the year, and you just felt like, ah, what, you know, how can we, what else can we do? And I just, it is very exciting, very, very exciting. You know, to me, I think that, I'm glad we have the emphasis and focus on reading. You know, it's the tide that lifts all ships. I think we talked about that, and it does make such a pivotal change. And I have a lot more I want to say, but I just, I couldn't be more excited. I wanted to highlight, I love that, the intervention model and how, just everything's so much more individualized and targeted, and I think that's where we're really going to be able to see meaningful change. But I just couldn't be more grateful, and I appreciate all the work that you guys all have done, because I know it's been tremendous. And, you know, at the end of the day, our students and families are going to be incredibly thrilled, and that's what we're here for. On the charter piece, I'm curious just how that's going to work, just from an autonomy standpoint. I mean, I think that's a hurdle. It's not picky, it's just the development of them are supposed to be something, that they're somewhat autonomous, and then, I would say, they should adopt our reading plan. I think it's amazing. I mean, if they didn't do it this year, they will next year. But, you know, what that looks like by way of resources, certainly, I want to make sure that you guys are provided that, and what does that look like, building that communication and that partnership? I think we have a pretty good relationship, but again, they're all different. So, that is another new uncharted territory. But ending on a positive, this is, I am, I am so proud, I am so grateful for your leadership, for your leadership, for all the work that you guys have done. It's a great time to be here, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Edwards, please.
So, my sightline is really from four years ago till now. And I will say that what I see is an actual implementation of a lot of good conversations that I've heard over the last four years, that never really found its way to a plan. So, I give great compliments, I can't say enough, about what I heard in the conversations today. I had conversations specifically with Rachel, where Rachel said, "Just trust me. Just trust me." And I did, and I'm thrilled. I can't say enough about how it all feels, as Mrs. Marinelli said, it's come together, that we're all saying the same thing, we're all talking the same language, and we're all moving, and it's not fragmented. So, I can't say enough about that. A couple of things that are not what I would say concerning. One thing, Rachel, that you said about how teachers want to share best practices from one school to the other, I did, and that's an example. I saw that two years ago in a conversation in a workshop with teachers who were from different elementary schools that had an opportunity to work together and share best practices, but there was never a plan that made that happen, that executed to that level. So, I'm excited that that's going, and I'm going to leave that really up to you, to how to solve the problem, because there really is never enough time in the day for any teacher, but how you're going to do that, I think, is extraordinary, and that's one example. The other place that I didn't hear a whole lot of, and I know it was discussed, and Sue brought this to my attention, I think probably two years ago, and I said something like, "What's the difference between this plan to last year's plan?" And her answer was, "We're focusing in on our English Language learners." And that, so, I just, I heard it, I just, I want to understand it or see tangible, which leads me to my, second to the last comment, is that all of these things coming together as one total plan, still, and I know that we're going to have scores, I know we get tested three times a year, but I think it's important for all of us to have a metric, that a benchmark metric that we can identify into each one of those things, like best practices, like, so, it's not that we're going to remove anything, but we want to see where we're leveraging our hours to their highest values, whether it's programming, whether it's time, whether it's sharing best practices. And so, if we can, and I think it's more from my perspective, because we've never had metrics. I don't, I've been asking for that for four years, other than the testing, and they keep changing the testings, so that keeps moving as well. So, if we can have some level of metrics, not today, but as you go through the process. And then, lastly, Mrs. Marinelli, you hit it on the button for me when it comes to charter and assigning that, because I agree, and it's been something that I talked about from when I got here. The train has left the station. Choice is here, charters are here, and it's our responsibility to make sure those kids have the best education as possible. And I always felt that there was a disconnect between the district and the charters. I like the concept of bringing that tighter and closer together, but we do need to assign a cost to that, so that people understand the roles and responsibilities that we have as a district, and it goes in combination to what we talked about, I think, over the last couple meetings, about unfunded mandates and how that affects our day-to-day. So, unbelievable work. I am so proud of all of you. I am excited for next year. I mean, it's going to be all of this foundation that you laid into place. Sky's the limit for us next year. Well done.
I thought you died, said okay. I mean, I don't want to say anything to get you pumped up. Hey, look, you did okay. We'll wait to see next year when we're number one in the nation. No, I mean, unbelievable. I mean, if you look about it, it's like, you know, and I saw from being here for a long time, if everybody rows the boat in the same direction, the long time, if everybody rows the boat in the same direction, the boat actually turns and moves, and you can see that in the data, you can see that in the, in the third grade reading, you can see this all the way across. You could see the, you know, you know, I always forget, and Dr. Green tells me is, no cap.
Get your cap. No cap, get your cap.
No cap, get your cap, which I'm assuming is that same exact plan that you're putting into high school, which will elevate all of our scores, I mean, for high school graduation. I think that's amazing because isn't that what our main mission is, is to get everybody to graduate from high school? And then be able to provide them opportunities to be able to continue their career. So when you see something like this and you see a plan, you see everybody come together, you see, again, success breeds success, I just, like I said, you did okay. I mean, I go, you guys did unbelievably amazing, and I know it's a lot of hard work, and, you know, ultimately, the teachers here are incredible, and our students will benefit so much by just being able to put this plan into place and being, having everybody go in the same direction. So thank you for everything you did. I know it's a lot of hard work, so thank you, thank you.
I want to thank you, Mrs. O'Day, for establishing the benchmark that all of our students who have learning differences like dyslexia can read a grade level, and that is on our agenda. That was part of my master's work, and I'm glad to see that we are acknowledging and focusing on that, and I thank you for that. I would like to recognize the Community Foundation for their support, and we cherish those partnerships out in the community that support your work. And the, I can't help it, Sue, when I go back in time, and I think about the literacy accomplishments that you had in the classroom as a model with Judy Robson and Debbie Schultz, and now it's a, at a wowzy, wowzy level.
Win-win, Karen, win-win.
A win-win. And with the leadership down to the work in our classrooms. And when I think about the work in the classrooms and the, the change process, because it's, the one thing we can count on is change in education, and it's difficult, but I think you pointed out that once the teachers who are doing the hard work, the real work in the classrooms, and they feel that success, it starts to reverberate with enthusiasm. And we've arrived at that point, which is a testimony to the leadership and a huge compliment to teachers that rose to the occasion and are doing that hard work and, and working as a team. So all said and done, we are in an incredibly positive place, and we do have raw scores, we do have matrices in place, and you've put those in this year for measurements, and those raw scores are something for all to, for our superintendent plugged in at the Leadership Institute where board members were able to listen and learn, and it reflected the, all the work collectively, and the work of the teachers and principals in our schools and our classrooms. And those raw scores are something to measure for all of us to celebrate. And I couldn't be a happier camper to be, it's an honor to work with all of you.
Just in closing, three people that are not sitting up here right now that have a heavy hand in the work, and it's, it's an interesting role to be the chief of elementary, middle, and high. You have one leg in curriculum and one leg in leadership, and they're constantly, you know, pulling back and forth on that. And they have been very aggressive with a sense of urgency and diligently to train our leaders and push mindset and expect implementation and hold people accountable and keep everybody moving. Leaders are second to teachers, the most important entity in that school building, and they've done amazing work in, in their roles and are a large part of why implementation is implementing, because they are overseeing training, guiding, coaching, their ultimate coach, the ultimate leader. And I'm just super proud of them, and I know this team loves working with and for them. And I just want to say thank you directly to the three of them and not running away from me and doing the great work that you do. You're a huge part of this, this plan.
So that's why David Jones walks around with a smile on his face.
All right. Thank you all, team. Magnificent job.
I do, too. Definitely. Do, does anyone want or need a break before?
Okay, yeah.
10 minutes work for everyone?
Or 12 o'clock, maybe?
Yes.
All right. We'll come back at 12.
That was, it's. Two minutes. So we are resuming our June 18 workshop session, and we'll be moving on to agenda item number four, budget update. Superintendent Connor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, we are at that time of year where we begin the budget development process, and we've initiated this through our one-on-one conversations about a month ago with each of our board members. And as we're beginning to solidify some numbers or at least seeing a better forecast, we wanted to present to you a budget update, and we'll continue to do that as we get to July and have our tentative budget hearings and all of that, that transpires on an annual basis. I will turn it over to our CFO, Bonnie Penner, to give us the latest on projections.
Perfect. Thank you. It really is exciting to have followed the team. It's kind of a little daunting to have followed that team because budgets never quite that, quite that exciting. But it is an interesting transition because this, you're able to see how this budget for the upcoming year has been developed. So much of what has come into this budget has been along and along as we've seen initiatives brought before the board. It's really helped this budget almost build itself. And saying that at a time when we're coming off of the ESAR, I don't even want to call it a cliff because the team has done such a great job of stepping us down gently out of a funding source that could have been really problematic for us. But instead, we were able to, or the team was able to take what was learned through some of the additional dollars with ESAR and really convert it and decide what we need to use. And again, to, to look at the way we had developed our budget in the past and how can we incorporate the things into our upcoming budget that matter and make it happen in such a way that it's not having a detrimental financial impact on the district. So I just want to say that. In all the years that I've been doing this, I've never seen such a team approach, and it's been wonderful. So today, again, this is talking about the 24-25 budget, so this is talking about where we're going, which we're in that time, that real crunch time that we are truly hoping to put a bow on it, as I just mentioned. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the funds that are going to be available to us and what that looks like, then about our budget initiatives, which of course you saw a huge one just recently, or just before me, and then a little bit more about the timeline. As it stands right now, we are still within the process. So what you're seeing today will change. If anything, we know that we're still enrolling students and watching, you know, having students move from school to school, and with that, we're slotting folks into positions and also, so right now is, is very much a draft budget that we're looking at. And we also, at this point, it's a very conservative budget because when we build the budget, we start out with worst-case scenarios, and then as we can pull in estimates and really finalize things, then you see it get a little bit better. So again, I don't want you to look at some of what you're going to see today and get real concern. So, you know, as we move forward, we're going to have our tentative hearing at the end of July, and so you will see some changes from what is presented for you today. So let me go on to our avail-- on to our available funds. So just wanted to show overall, of course, the state FEFP, that is what runs our schools. We get additional funding outside of this, but this is really what drives how we budget our schools. And if you remember, Capital City came and gave us a presentation where it was presented, the total funding increase through the FEFP for Sarasota County students was $26 million or funding increase, little over five and a half percent. But we need to realize that now the FEFP is really a blended representation of the students within Sarasota County. So we saw that they are anticipating an increase in our scholarship. Students of nine and a half million are increased, the increase that will then flow to our charter partners is 3.6 million, leaving us with our students and an increase of 13 million. So about half of that relates to our students. A big piece of that is again, anticipated growth, which for other entities, not for Sarasota County schools. So again, rather than the five and a half percent increase as was reported, what we're looking at is just under two and a half percent in regards to Sarasota County schools. And we are currently projecting that our students in our traditional schools will see a decrease in enrollment. We're at a very pivotal time as kids are enrolling, so hopefully we won't see that, but it is what was projected. It's a decrease of around 350 students, but that's around 1%. So it does, it's a lot, but it is not, it is not something that is detrimental or would cause a huge, huge impact to us funding-wise. But we will be monitoring that. We're looking at enrollment. Every week, we get reports and we pull out of the system and see where each school is and determine how that looks. Do they need to hold teaching units? Or are we going to allocate additional, because again, the growth happens in certain pockets and we do our best to forecast appropriately, but that does change throughout the year. So we'll continue to look at that and hopefully that 353 will go away and turn positive. So of course, we do have other funding sources outside of the FEFP. A large one is our referendum. Right now, the tax roll is looking to increase for us by about 5%. They're just a little under that. You may have seen an article recently, I think it was in The Observer, that talked about a lot of the other entities that are levying off of the tax roll. And there's one up 10%. So just to, so you're aware, the calculation for the school district tax rolls involves some different pieces that other, the county and other municipalities get. So we are only seeing at this point a 5% based on what the property appraiser has estimated as of June 1. July 1 is our next big date. That's when the property appraiser officially certifies the tax roll. So that's when we know what that levy is going to be. So we're waiting impatiently for that number to come. Also, we're seeing a large increase in our interest earnings, as I think a lot of folks are seeing. This is being budgeted right now, the increase in interest earnings, because we have been seeing it the last couple of years. As we tend to, as we spend down fund balance, which is something that we intended to do in the year that we're closing out, we will see that we will have less dollars in the bank to earn interest on as well, you know, just depending on what happens in the economy, that may change. But that's something that we're being, we're able to include in the budget this year and really help soften a little bit of what we're seeing as far as, you know, not a whole lot of an increase coming from the state and seeing that our property values have softened a little bit as far as how those have been rising in the past. So we have some regular increases that we see year after year. Health insurance, at this point, the increase is estimated at 11.9%, so just under 12%. That would equate to about $5 million for the fiscal year that we are approaching. Last year, we went up just under 20%. And before that, we were seeing very modest increases. So we are in a much better place than a lot of other school districts and entities throughout the state, but there are, there are just, as anybody is seeing, increasing costs that are flowing through and hitting our health insurance program. Our, we do fund a half a percent increase. That's through our contract and so anyway, everyone receives a half a percent as of July 1. So that is budgeted into the draft budget as you see now. So now, the exciting thing, some of the initiatives that are included in this budget. As has been discussed quite a bit, we started this, well, we started Mr. Connor's term with a special education evaluation. And with that, there were some recommendations that were made. So we have incorporated quite a few recommendations in there and those have had some costs. So that is one piece that we have put into this budget as well, and I'll talk a little bit more about this, we are experiencing an increase in our ESE population, specifically those students with some significant needs that are costly needs. So that is something that, again, we are incorporating into this budget. So the special education study had two primary, two major recommendations as far as costs are concerned, I should say. The first was to add the ESE compliance coordinators. We added nine new positions. Seven were just to support K-12 instruction and I think we spoke about those before, but we did also add two of those compliance coordinators for the pre-K program. So we ended up adding nine as opposed to the initial discussion about seven. Additionally, the ESE program facilitators, which had been the ESE liaisons at the schools, we added additional funding so that those could be, in effect, 11-month positions, so that we would have another month of those folks helping with the support that they provide at the schools. One thing I want to mention, you may notice on this slide, I've got at the bottom a statement. I'm proposing that this additional cost be funded through our referendum. At one point, we had been funding a position called the ESE compliance coordinator, and I believe that that position was sunset years ago. And what I'd like to do is replace that with these ESE compliance coordinators, just to keep some consistent funding through that, the referendum dollars. So you'll see that I've got that on a few of these screens and I wanted to mention too, and I should have done that at the beginning. If you can remember when Ms. Truitt came and talked in regards to the Financial Advisory Committee, she mentioned needing transparency and trying to understand how the board makes decisions as to what gets included in the referendum funding. So you'll see that I try to present what I'm recommending gets funded by the referendum, just to sort of meet that need and so that it's very clear that we're trying to do this. Most of what I'm talking about today is really taking some old programs that had been funded from the referendum and replacing them with sort of the latest and greatest, the new things that we're being, we are implementing at this time. So again, we are seeing a net increase in ESE student enrollment that in the budget that we have drafted at this point is just over $2.3 million. We added approximately 16 ESE teachers and that was intentional as, you know, as the study recommended, but again, it is additional, it was above and beyond what we thought we were going to need based on the ESE study. And again, it's happening because of the additional population. We added two and a half ESE behavior intervention coaches. And as you know, we upgraded our separate day school prayer professionals to an SSP 9. That takes place on July 1 for their new contract for the 24-25 year. And if you can see the chart, I just wanted to give you a visual. The line represents the FTE enrollment or the unweighted FTE enrollment for Sarasota County, so for our traditional students. So you can see that third bar over, it dipped during 2020, 2021, which was COVID in every school district dipped in that time. So we went back and we gained for the next two years and went up to 37,826 from that low of 36,000 students. And then in the second bar to the right, again, where the line is, this year, we're looking at our enrollment having been 37,724, down from 37,826 in our high year, which was 22,23. So again, small adjustments back down, but we are still higher than we were several years ago, which is why we're supporting, you know, additional schools. Because you can see, even though we are seeing a decline, we are still up above where we were several years ago. The one thing, most of that is based on trend data. So we're hoping that the trend down, being that it was just one year, is not going to be seen. But again, the forecasting data looks that we will be down to the 350 students, which is the 37,372 for the 24-25 forecast year. But then if you look at the solid bars that are, I think you don't have color, but the bottom of the bar are our ESE, our basic students with ESE services. So we don't get a lot of additional funding for those students, but they are identified as ESE students. The top piece of the bar, which on the screen is more of a lime green, those are our significant needs students, our 254s and 255s programs, 254s and 255s. Those students are weighted by 3.697. So if I'm one student and I'm a 254, I actually earn three and a half times the funding as a basic education student. The other are our 255s, which is almost six times the funding that we would receive for a basic education student. So when you look at what has happened this year and you see that we did decline in the number of students, unweighted FTE, we increased significantly for our ESE population. And because of that, you know, whereas we knew we were seeing fewer students, we actually ended up receiving additional FEFP funding because of those weightings and seeing the shift in those students to those ESE populations. So with that said, it sort of flows into, it was sort of a perfect storm where we were updating our ESE program and adding because we knew based on the study that there were needs with that, but at the very same time, we're seeing an increase in the neediest population with that student group.
Can I ask a question real quick? The top, the number, sorry, on the top, it would be green on that. Is that the number of students? The eight for, look at 24-25, 860.59. What is that number?
That is an unweighted FTE. So
The amount?
The amount, yes. Those are whole bodies versus weighted times that 3.6 or 6.
So the year prior was 847. So the lift is 13?
That's the, that's what's forecasted for 24-25. So if you notice, we went up, just going back to sort of the middle, from 21-22, we were at 54478. Those were actual students in those two groups. And then it went up about 100 in 22-23 to 646. And then 23-24, it went up 200 to 847. So that trend, it doesn't seem to be carrying through to our forecast for 24-25 quite like you would think it would. What happens is the forecasting for 24-25 is done in December, January, so before we have the February count. So it's lagging a little bit. So that, that big 200 student increase that we saw in 23-24, again, that forecast did not pick up the full impact of that for the 23-24 year. So the anticipation is that that 860 is a low number, again, because it lags just a little bit through the forecast.
And has the amount of the weighting, has that changed?
It does. It's changed a little bit. The 255s went up this last year and the 254s kind of, it may have even gone down just a tad. That does change every year. They look at the cost report. So they look at what we actually identify as costs to support those students. And then when, when the legislature
Budget conference?
Yeah, has the conference, they certify what that new weighting will be. So it does change every year.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry. I just wanted to make sure I was reading it right.
Nope. That's great. Okay. So that was the one initiative, which is again, the ESE program review and some additional focus on those students. We've talked quite a bit too about the pre-K program and, oh, did it, yeah, I wish, I should have, I should have asked that it was printed in color because it doesn't, can you? No, you can't. You're, nope, I'm sorry. Sometimes I get fancy and with my slide presentation and it doesn't work out right. Anyway, so this upcoming year, we have 24 classrooms in pre-K. So again, this is an initiative that the board has supported, that we have funded within the budget. It continues to be worked as we, as we work on our funding. One of the things that's happened recently is our Title I funding. We just received our allocation from the state. So it comes from the feds through the state. And we had about a 10% decrease in our Title I funding. So the total allocation that comes to Sarasota was about 10% less. With that, we also added another school. So that means even though it's 10% less, it's also been diluted in that it's being provided to additional schools. So at this time, we've pulled out, the Title I funding is one of the ways to support this, but we continue to work on this and make sure that we've got the best funding model we can. This is another one. I think previously, there had been discussion about it being funded from referendum. So the dollars that we need to finish supporting this program, again, are being proposed to be supported through our referendum as we move forward. And then finally, again, makes sense that we're talking about this after Our Ladies in Red came up here just a bit ago. Our major initiative, the literacy initiative, is also funded within this budget. So what we have that's really interesting is most of this initiative happened through some transfer of additional units at schools where we were over allocating units for class size. So we pulled some of that back and traded them out to get these 41 literacy coaches and 25 literacy interventionists. The reason you're seeing a cost here primarily is we've added 19, almost 20 additional intensive reading teachers. And that was more a result of our regular allocation formula versus anything that was previously discussed. It's just the regular allocation formula provided those additional units. So looking at just under a million and a half dollars, similarly, we're proposing that this literacy for all initiative be funded through the referendum. We have been funding the reading recovery program through the referendum. So this is simply swapping and now we'll be funding the literacy for all initiative through the referendum. So again, just making sure that we're clarifying the terminology and the latest and greatest programs that are being funded through there. And just to let you know too, part of what you were, what was submitted to you was an additional packet. And within that, starting on page four, you can see what our allocation formulas look like, the staffing formulas for the different schools, elementary, middle, and high. And just again, so you can see how we build the bulk of the budget and what schools are allocated. So these are the allocation formulas. And when we give you the tentative budget book, as well as the final budget book, you will see how that translates. will see how that translates to each school, those particular calculations. Okay, we had some additional changes as well that happened through the school allocation process. About $1.6 million, we have, I think this has been discussed before, we've seen an increase in ESOL population. And that results in additional allocations to the schools. So we saw an increase from 22, 23 to 23, 24 of about 350 ESOL students. And that's FTE. So a student may not speak English, but would only be considered ESOL for FTE purposes for part of the day. It's usually only their core classes. So we don't get additional weighting or additional funding for them, for instance, for their PE courses and other electives. So anyway, we have seen a significant increase. And what happened through the allocation process over the summer, we sort of caught up. We had been providing additional allocations throughout the year, but we kind of caught it up. And we've got almost an additional 10 allocations for that, as well, the formula produced an additional seven guidance counselors or certified school counselors. Now, some of the bits and pieces left over from ESER. We had some positions that had been funded through ESER that we just could not find another funding source. I think most of them, we did a really good job either converting or finding additional grant funds that we used. But we had 11 positions that just, we were not able to slot anywhere else. So we will be picking those up with general fund. We've discussed a little bit more about safety and security, some additional enhancements. So those are, at this point slated, cost $2.1 million. We've got some additional things. I think there's going to be some bargaining happening in regards to a few of them. But this is where you're going to start to see where I'm referring back to some agenda items. So a lot of what's going to be talked about now are job descriptions and updates and all that are on today's agenda.
Yeah, and I just want to be clear that we've had the conversations through our one-on-one, so I know it's not a custom for us to have, talk about something at a workshop and then have it on the agenda the same day. But these conversations have been ongoing prior. So just want to make that clear. And I appreciate the opportunity to have that discussion during the workshop to make our regular meeting a little more efficient.
Perfect. Yes, so we, there are two job descriptions that are on today's agenda to be added as a result of some enhancements to the Safety and Security Program. The Safety and Security Coordinator, which is just one position. And then the Safety and Security Officer position, which at this point, I believe there are six that will be added for that. We talked also about an additional software costing $400,000 to, that overlays on our cameras to provide some additional security. So that's the $2.1 million for Safety and Security enhancements. We had some additional departmental budget requests for additional positions. The total cost for these position adds is just under $200,000. And as you can see, we're adding in here the Executive Director, even though that position's already been filled, the first budget impact is really for the 24, 25 year. But we managed to fill that position or add that position through a reduction of some other positions that were kind of co-supported through grants and the general fund. So anyway, that lessened the impact of that add. We've got in Safety and Security, two positions that have been requested, a fingerprint processor and a central security monitor. So those are existing types of positions. They just need more due to workload to support what's happening in that department. We also, and this is a very small piece, but I just want to mention it because you'll be seeing a little bit more as we move through the year. We've added a head custodian, a partial year for that position, starting in May, or March, wrong M, starting in March, to support the new K-8. So we will start adding positions to staff that I know that there's been, the principal has been announced for that school. So now we need to get working and determine what other positions need to be added prior to the start of the school year. So the next two slides really relate to some specific departments that had a strategy for making some upgrades to their existing personnel. And just to let you know too, the top line where it says upgrades, net impact to the general fund is 165,000. That relates to the next three pages of upgrades. That's not just this one. So actually, in Communications, yeah, Craig is probably not happy back there. Yeah. It's not all you, no. In fact, Communications is actually giving back a little bit of money. So theirs is, yeah. So again, the goal in the Communications Department was to upgrade five individuals through four job description updates. So that makes it a little interesting. But, so one position was eliminated and that is being used to support the upgrades in those job descriptions. So Agenda Item 30 is a Senior Videographer slash Editor, going from an SSP 12 to a 14. Agenda Item 31 and 32 are both manager, are going to manager positions, which is an Admin J to an Admin G. And then we also have a Senior Graphic Designer and Content Producer, that's Agenda Item 33, which again, is going to an SSP 14. So again, just taking into account the skills required for those particular positions and trying to better conform with what is the market rate for those individuals. So that is Communications. The next department is Materials Management. The same thing, a position was reduced in order to fund some upgrades for some individuals. This is Agenda Item 36, 37, and 38. So moving a purchasing manager to a supervisor and again, the records retention supervisor and print services supervisor, at moving them from an Admin H to an Admin F. Again, just recognizing some of the specifics for those positions. We are hoping that, we had to sort of pivot a little bit in regards to the position that was eliminated. We are expecting through a retirement to possibly have this fully funded within the Materials Management Department. We just need to wait a little bit to get that happen. At this point, it costs, it did cost $21,000 to make those shifts within that department. And then our final page, these are not held within one department. These are within several departments. We had a couple of administrative clerical folks that we upgraded. The first Agenda Item 41 relates to the Criminal Justice Academy and upgrading that from an SSP 6 to a 9. We have a fleet manager or fleet maintenance administrator. This is in, obviously, transportation, relates to a job that has, we've just had a really hard time filling that position. And then you'll see four upgrades to directors from supervisors. Three had been approved in the past when we had an interim superintendent and were moved back. So now we would like to make those, yes, make them permanent, thank you. And again, pull in the payroll director just because that whole HR payroll area, the support and the, you know, the contracts that we have with our bargaining units, which are going to be added to, it just makes it a lot more difficult than maybe it has been in the past. The thick black line in the middle separates the, above the line, those are our general fund costs. And then below the line are costs that are funded through grants.
And one more, we'll bring a proposal for one more restructuring of our federal grants programs office to support our ELL populations, as well as all of our federal programs. So we're working to put the final touches on that. But there'll be some job description revisions, as well as some different positions. But fortunately, we'll have minimal impact on the general fund because they're going to be grant-supported with one of the recent grants that we were awarded by the DOE. That is not presented here, but it will be presented to you officially at our next meeting. But that should take us to where we're at with the complete restructuring as we move into the, into budget and finalizing and approving our budget. We should have that last little bit to be the last piece for our plan to initiate in 24, 25.
Perfect. Okay, and then, I don't have my, so the final, oop. There we are. Okay. So this is just a very condensed view of our budget. Again, in your packet, you have the more expanded that you're used to looking at of the budget. And I realized when I got here, I had a typo because I have that the forecasted ending fund balance is 8.09%. It's actually 7.91% as we made some additional changes. Again, this is the, I hate to say worst-case scenario, because that's not the, but this is just the most conservative budget we fully expect as we move forward. This is going to look a lot better as we start getting some more of our estimates tied down and, like I said, slotting folks into positions such as that. So again, this is where we stand with our draft budget. We are waiting for that July 1 date for the property appraiser to certify that final mileage, to see how that comes through. Department of Education then has until July 19th to provide us what they calculate as their required local effort. After that, we will be bringing you the advertisements in accordance with TRIM requirements on July 23rd. This year, we plan to advertise through our online methods. So those, there is no plan at this point to put them in the newspaper. So we will be one of the first doing that. So that's kind of exciting. I believe some of the other districts might be doing both, just to start it off. But we're ahead of the pack since we've already been doing our online advertising. So we're excited about that. So you'll see those advertisements and the tentative budget on July 23rd. And then on July 30th, we have the public hearing on the tentative budget. So that has already been planned. And then we will have the final budget presented for approval on September 17. So that is, that is the extent of my presentation. If you have any questions?
Please. Mine aren't questions. These are just some observations, if I may. I think Superintendent Connor, you made reference to this at the Leadership Institute, that for better reference, the poster that was made in Craig's department. So some of the things that we're seeing with the adjustment of the salaries and job descriptions, many things are going to be done in-house to save a tremendous amount of money versus having to outsource things like those multi-colored posters, which can be very expensive. So I think when you really look at the money that we're going to be saving by doing things in-house, it's going to pretty much be a wash. So, and I think it's very good that you've gone through, staff has gone through all these job descriptions, because in the past, it was like, we're going to keep the money at that, but we're going to find somebody who's a hard worker and we're just going to attach that job to them. So I think it's good that you're aligning the job description and the pay to the appropriate person and taking some duties off of others, to put it where it needs to be done. And I think it's very important for the public to know too, that we are willing to pay our staff for what they do. And they work hard. They work very, very hard. And a lot of these positions have not been raised in many, many, many years. So I think it's, as Ms. Rose always said, and everybody, it's a win-win.
We're holding on to that.
Yeah. So thank you.
Yeah, just for the public, just so everybody knows, is that the increase to the Safety and Security, as I pointed out at the last board meeting, is that, in House Bill 1473 that was just passed, there's a lot of more school safety directives in that new law that's been passed, that the school district has to make sure that we apply, because ultimately, our kids' safety is of the utmost importance, I know, to everybody on this board and every staff member. And our staff is also, their safety and this will all impact them. So when you look at those different requirements that are come through the Office of Safe Schools now, is those positions are needed in order for us to be compliant, as well as to make sure that we're providing that safety and security to the highest level, which I know that as a parent here, as everybody knows, that, you know, we have to make sure that we do everything we can do in order to keep our kids safe. Other than that, thank you, Ms. Penner. I know that this is with ESER and we've had multiple conversations. I think that to be able to put this in the position, I know that you took a very conservative approach. So hopefully that things will come in a little bit better than what we anticipate, which I think that they will. And, you know, thanks for all your hard work. And again, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So I have to say that, one, I understand in going into this year, that there were going to be some financial concerns with ESER. It's been, the cliff has been referenced a lot, but I think it came in from a really soft landing. But I know that wasn't easy. And I have to say, this budget process has been, for me as a board member, the best. Because, obviously, I know we've had a handful of updates publicly, but there have been multiple meetings that the superintendent and the CFO have, and also the deputy superintendent have met with us to align the various realignment to the strategic plan. As you mentioned, this has been a really, it's just been really, really comprehensive in the timing of it. So it makes sense. It's not just arbitrary picking what have you and maybe not making that something that makes sense in perpetuity. So I'm very, very appreciative of that process. But I also love that you had the agenda items on here, so very transparent. But I really do appreciate the direction. I know it's been a tough year, but as mentioned, the best part about this is it's solely narrowly focused on the academic goals of this district. Of course, there are operational goals, but to support the academic goals. And I think that needs to be recognized because that was a lot of work behind the scenes. So thank you to all your teams for doing that. Because that, some of the meetings were pretty amazing, where you're like, you found how much money and doing what? So, and then it really made sense, so it wasn't just a squeeze for the purpose of a squeeze. And so I'm very excited about that and very encouraged, and I want to make sure that the public's aware of it. The referendum piece that we talked about previously, I do think it's important to highlight, as mentioned by Mrs. Truitt, on, you know, what's the long-term goal that that referendum is supporting that our public can also see, particularly the academic benefits. The other part of me, or the unforeseen part, is you don't want to, I can't think of a better word, but you don't want to use that, because those are incredibly important pre-K, but reading and ESC, those are non-negotiables. So, but I also, I love the idea that we can track those items. It's not just high in the sky. But I want to be cautious of, in the event of, and I believe it will consistently be supported, especially if we have those initiatives, but they're not things that we're willing to sacrifice in the event it was never, if it were, for ungodly reason, it was not supported. And so I just want to be thoughtful of that. What, you know, especially when we come into the four-year, you know, maybe year two, year three, year four, you have contingency budgets of, in the event this doesn't pass, we're not willing to compromise this. But, and we have an off-ramp similar to what we have planned on for ESER, for example. I just want to propose that because I don't want the public feeling like they're extorted when it comes to those things. I think very similar with the arts. I mean, every year, it felt like we were going to get rid of, we're never going to get rid of them. But, you know, sometimes you have to cut back in various areas, but these are fundamental to the success of our students. So that's my only kind of caveat of, I think they're, I love the idea of aligning. I think that, I think even, you know, when you consider the initiatives of the district in the board changeover, what have you, having that buy-in, those are key elements to the success of the district. So I'm not opposed to that. I just want to think future forecasting of I just want to think future forecasting of, we are prepared in the event it weren't to pass, how we would have our contingency planning. And then finally, I know this isn't ideal, I don't think we have that, I don't know how many positions we have, especially with the completion of Esser, that are grant-funded. I know you and I have talked about this, and I think that we, Esser's a good example of how dangerous it is essentially to fund positions with grant, non-recurring money. Now, I know that there's new initiatives, and that's why you'll have a grant that, okay, this is a new initiative, we'll have a, you know, new member of staff, but as a goal, my preference, my, just for thought, is to minimize the amount of positions we have funded by grants, just because I think if there's an alternative way to build them into the general fund, or, I mean, even if it's the referendum, which is somewhat, it's four-year, I mean, it's not operate, right? It's a little, I mean, it's a little different, but just, I think if we can do that as much as possible, it's a preference, because that's, it kills me when I think about grants not being renewed, and then we have a staff member and you don't want them to, I mean, that's got to be very, that's got to be way, very heavy on those individuals. So as just a general priority, I'd like to see when possible, if we can get to that point. So those are my thoughts, but great job.
Thank you.
And July 1st is not far away.
It isn't.
Mr. Edwards.
Thank you. Great job.
Thank you.
I'll start there. We have a policy that says our general fund balance can't go below a certain percentage. Would you share that with us?
Exactly. Our, the policy says that we will keep within a 7.5% fund balance, so we are, we are right there.
And for the first time as a board member, that's the first I've heard that. And so if we look at the trend, which is, it's not your fault, so I'm not, I just really am pointing out the trend of what we're, where we're at. And I think where my next concern is here is, this is before we go into bargaining. And it's, it's a, it's a place that I really hoped our school system and our district would not be in. And there isn't, to Mrs. Ziegler's point, there isn't anything I would undo. Everything that we've discussed as priorities, safety and security, ESC, literacy, those are all non-negotiables, so I'm not, I'm not challenging where we are, but I am alerting where we are so that we can start paying attention to where we're going and start to make priorities about how, how we're spending our money. I think there's a lot of changes that have happened. I don't need to go into them. I don't want to get political. I don't want to even go there. I just think that we've, you know, the cards have been dealt to us, and now we have to start being frugal about how we're moving forward. And I think, at least from my seat, what I would like to do with moving forward into some of my one-on-one conversations with the superintendent, is to begin to hear his priorities, where he thinks he can have the impact, and how we, he would like to see the dollars spent, so that I can just sort of get a heads up. And I think it's, it's an eye-opener. It's a, it's a big eye-opener. So I thank you for your work. No one's at fault. We all share in the pain.
Well, again, I think that coming off of the Esser and absorbing, we knew that this year was going to take somewhat of a hit, and I think that we, you know, it is, it is a lot better than we thought. And if you do look at the trend, I mean, this, this sheet has a lot of the same year represented in a couple of different lights. So when you look at the trend, that may get it, may get a little, it may not give you the, quite the variance that you're, that you're thinking there is. You know, we closed the '22, '23 year with just under 15%. We recognized, we intentionally said, we are going to use some of that fund balance to give a one time, so we made that intentional choice to give some dollars. So when you look at the projected actuals for '23, '24, which is column AW, we're going from that 14.99 to 11.53. So we intentionally did that, and then we're going, right now, we're building the budget as though it's going to be 7.91 versus the 11.53. So yes, we are stepping it down somewhat, and we expected that this year was going to be difficult, but I tell you what, to have, to have turned that negative into a positive is really impressive from, again, the team that built a lot of that.
Yeah, no, I, like I said, I voted for that decrease in the fund balance. So I'm, I'm part of the conversation. I think we've all understood where we were headed, but it's, it's now, reality has set in, and we really have to start paying attention to how we're moving forward, not as comfortably as, as we had in the past. So that's, that's really my point here.
Absolutely.
Are you done?
You're welcome.
I think it's worthwhile to point out the Esser funds and the way that they have been allotted previously was a huge, huge, huge hill to climb and come up with the, not only the budget that you have in front of us right now, but the foundation that's been built, the realignment with everything focusing in on a foundation that has systems that are, are, and have moved instruction, something that has been a dream for me for the four years that I've been on this board. And I know that in many meetings that we've had, that in the world that I lived in, we consciously chose to look at teacher and staff raises to bring quality and instruction to this district, and God bless those teachers, because they brought quality. It's in front of us in real-world data. Can you talk about what is the state criteria for a reserve? We are a conservative district that sets forth a 7.5, which you've given us a very conservative number with the expectation of that changing, but let's also put that in perspective of the date, the state mandate, date, state.
So the state, it sort of comes around in a different way, in that they don't give us necessarily a mandate. What they say is, if we drop below 3%, we need to, we will be considered in financial crisis, and we have to start reporting back to the, to the state and give them a plan as to how we're going to get out of that financial difficult situation. So, so a lot of times you'll hear that 3% as being the minimum, but again, that's, that's where you start having Big Brother.
For the four years that I've been on this board, you have delivered with a very transparent budget, understanding that with all the, again, the foundation, the realignments, the systems that have been put in place that have lended great success in the raw data that's coming out for our students. And of course, I'm, I think I can speak as the chair for the board collectively, that we will work towards moving that 7.5 up, but everything is a balancing act. And I think the biggest variable in this, which was a concern for me for the last several years, is, is the way that we were using those Esser funds and the hill that you have all so successfully conquered in taking those expenditures, the amount of money that was coming in here for COVID relief, the Esser funds, and turning it into great success in student performance. And I'm thrilled with where we're going and extraordinarily confident in our leadership to continue to take us there with a strong conservative budget and reserve.
Absolutely.
Thank you. We're moving on to member comments. Mr. Edwards, please.
I understand that there's a county commission meeting on illegal immigration and that the chair will be speaking at that hearing.
That is false, misleading, and divisive. Sir, please.
Okay, my mistake.
Are you done?
Yes.
Mrs. Ziegler.
I'm just going to give a shout-out to former board member Frank Kovach, who is responsible for the 7.5 fund balance policy that we have, that I think over year over year has really allowed us to be in a very comfortable place. And that's all I have.
Mr. Inos, please.
Just again, I know we'll be having our hurricane preparedness coming up at the workshop in July. Obviously, with 13 inches of rain, and if you saw Sarasota High School's parking lot, it was about, I don't know, four feet deep out there. It was really, really significant. And I know that with this coming up, as I tell all the citizens of the county, make sure that you're well-prepared this year, as in previous years, not that you weren't, but if you keep looking at the forecasting, just please make sure that you do, your due diligence to make sure that you're ready and you know what you're doing. I know here at the school board that we're committed to that, is that the shelters that we provide, you know, we want to do everything that we can to make sure everybody is, is safe and sound in their environment. So just again, my only comment would be is, please do your due diligence, is it's kind of scary. Have a plan. Thanks.
Thank you. I just want to restate, thank you to everybody for the presentations. And as, I still feel like I'm a relatively new school board member. The first year is kind of a blur, just trying to learn everything, and thank goodness, I had somewhat of a background at being a retired employee, because I couldn't even imagine coming without any, not while I remember. But anyway, I, I think that, I do want to thank Superintendent Connor and all staff. I feel that the transparency, there's really been no surprises, either between our one-on-ones and the board presentations. You guided us what positions, how you wanted to realign things, and then having extra budget meetings with Ms. Penner, I feel like there are no surprises. So when today's budget came, it's no surprises. And I appreciate that very much, and I think it's been a great year. I just can't believe it's like, done. It went so fast. But thank you all for all the hard work and everybody working together, and for this board member, and I think others, keeping us well-informed so we can support you. Thank you.
It's been an incredible year. The politics has been tough, and the rhetoric and misinformation that comes forth, but I can truly tell you from the depth of all my passion in my heart, that the silver lining has arrived, and students' performance is growing, and we are in a great place, and I celebrate our teachers, schools, staff, and all of you. We will adjourn, and we will be back here at 3 o'clock for our regularly scheduled board meeting. Thank you all.